Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 17th, and it is 9:00 a.m. We're in the City Hall John Net's Community Wing. I'm calling this meeting to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and pause for a short moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cook, if you could call to roll, please.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We're going to begin today's meeting with public participation. Please remember to follow the rules as outlined in the agenda. Please silence all devices and be respectful of all the speakers. I'll remind everyone, no defamatory comments. Yes, ma'am, come right up. There's 30 minutes allotted for this period.
Jeanne Duarte, C-section. Last week, the audio and video were grobled. They were compromised. They were grobled and shortcut short. Although voices, I'm sorry, I'm jumping here. Although concerns of the issue were discussed with IT prior, weeks prior to the event. Therefore, there was no backup plan. Sorry, I'm jumping all over your place. This amounts to suppression of public speech and interference with public awareness, violating First Amendment rights and public meeting laws. I visited Jeremy's home site, and anyone with common sense can tell you that water flows downhill. In this case, it backed up between Jeremy's home and a retention canal. Either the water wasn't making it to the canal or the canal backed up. Recent road repairs still have yet to prove its worth for drainage, for proper drainage. Jeremy's covert does not appear to be compromised. However, if anybody insists on it being replaced, it should be done at this cost of the city. This water intrusion reflects our failing infrastructure. Despite our city manager's denying financial distress in her recent letter to DOGE, the use of extraordinary circumstances are being sought to raise impact fees, which can contradict affordability while approving $68,000 for a 90-day assistant manager and over $300,000 for surveillance contract and other major budget increases, plus wasted $17,000 on SGR tainted city manager search and $72,000 on a renewed lobby contract when these duties are in the scope of city manager. These costs contradict claims of fiscal responsibility and conflict with the state Executive Order 2544, DOGE Initiative to Eliminate Waste. While constitutional officers refuse to comply with the DOGE review process undermining state oversight efforts, current impact fees already prevent affordable housing. The Westward Expansion is designed for more high-end homes, which will only keep prices high and in our stalled economy. The 28% mortgage rule for a $15 an hour job is $728 per month or less. I understand that two years ago, we didn't even have a franchise fee or tax utility, utility tax. As for the Fire Station 22 and 26, the city failed to notify residents that 5G cell towers will be part of the fire stations, resulting in deception and lack of transparency and placing residents and firefighters who sleep as close as 60 feet from the towers at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Risa Paps, and I'm with the, I'm the president of the Palm Coast Historical Society. I'd like to discuss the grant program that was turned over to FC3 that facilitated it this last year for the City of Palm Coast.
Oh, oh, it's an agenda. I'm sorry, Ms. Risa. Risa, that's an agenda item.
Okay.
Wait till the agenda item comes. I'm sorry. Thank you, ma'am. Next person for public comment?
Good morning. Manley Coons. Two years ago, I came to this council meeting complaining about a swell next to my house. It was terrible, and for two years I waited, nothing happened. I came to this council on the first of the year. They introduced me to Melissa Hill, and in five months, it was fixed. It looks better than it did when I moved in. I think she deserves a commendation for her work. She kept us informed. It was amazing what she was able to do, and we appreciate it, and I know. But I think she needs to be recognized for the work that she did for us. Secondly, we recently, last week, listed our house for sale. Not because we don't enjoy the house, but we're just not in a condition and shape to take care of it anymore. However, we have a wastewater problem in the street at our house, as well as a bunch of our neighbors. And the toilet's back up, and one of my neighbors even says he has a stench that's coming into his house. Palm Coast knows what the problem is. I spoke to someone about it. They found the problem, and they said, "We just need to dig it up and fix it, and everything will be fine." They've been out there two or three times, or out there this morning, but nothing's been done to fix it. I found a makeshift way so that my toilets work okay, but it's not a way that you want to show somebody when they buy your house. So I just hope and pray I don't have to come back and tell you I lost the sale of my house because Palm Coast did not fix the problem. So I ask your help in trying to address this and getting someone out there to do something so we can live a little better and get rid of that smell that we do have in the front yard. And I don't know Melissa's here, but I want to thank her very much for what she did. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Please see Mr. Di Lorenzo in the back. Raise your hand, Jason. See Mr. Di Lorenzo if he can help you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. The right turn lane going eastbound on 100 onto Seminole Woods is completed, and it's a terrific add to the traffic problem at that intersection. However, I'm still waiting for that right turn lane on Sesame on the Seminole Woods, which is still seems to be a big issue for all the people that live in that section of Palm Coast. Please look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Webb.
Good morning. Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I think first of all, I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge the assassination of elected officials in this country. All of us are public. All of you have been elected officials, and we know it's a hard position, and not everyone is going to be happy, content, or supportive in what we do. So with that, I want to extend and appreciate the risk that you may or may not even be aware of what we do as public officials and elected officials. Secondly, I want to applaud our Sheriff's Department for their hands-off support of the rally of the No Kings event this weekend. Every single representative of our Sheriff's Department was supportive, was there for protective reasons, allowed us, all of us, to speak and practice our First Amendment rights, which is what I'm doing right here today. They did a phenomenal job. We didn't get on the news. Congratulations to everyone. So again, I just want to appreciate and understand the sad fact of we're in a time where there's unknown risks, sacrifices, putting yourself out there. And it's important that the citizens know that that is an element of the job we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public participation? Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Good morning. Dennis McDonald. I wanted to come and talk to you. I wasn't around to speak about what went on with Station 22 and the cell tower. And I've written to all of you, and I've given you information on that. We've, this is round two. So five years ago, we went round one with you, with the city, okay, on a cellphone tower on the, on the golf course. You lost, okay? We are in a position now where, that you've put us in, that we're going to engage our attorney again, okay? And we're going to file a claim on the city for what you're doing. You're violating the codes of the city. Now, I know, you know, I had some responses from people, "Well, Mr. Di Lorenzo said so." Mr. Di Lorenzo, are you kidding me? This is a guy who spent 10 years on the City Council, okay, with Mr. Landon, okay, the former city manager, who wrote the wireless overlay system that you're working on, okay? Now, let me bring to mind that just a year, last year, okay, there was a scheduled meeting between Mr. Di Lorenzo, Mr. Landon, and the county officials, okay, for placement of cell towers. Interesting, isn't it? Very interesting. What's going on? County officials? Di Lorenzo? Okay, the former city manager? I don't know what transpired on. All I know is that it was scheduled. So there's some kind of play going on here, and I suspect that somebody is still getting monetary benefit, okay, of this wireless overlay plan that was put in place, you know, when another person was the city manager. The bottom line is, five years ago, okay, you were going to put a cell tower at the golf course. You learned the hard way when, and that all started, and then now city manager was the director of Parks and Rec at the time and recommended it, okay? Well, it didn't go well because there was a number of things that were violated in the city regulations. The bottom line here is, is that what you're trying to do here is you're trying to make an exception after the fact, okay? And so what'll end up happening is we will end up having to go the hard way on this thing and prove that the city is violating their own regulations when they do this. There's an overlay zone, okay, and there's Chapter 13 to be contended with. And everybody thinks that you can write this code such as that you give yourself an opt-out, and you can go and dump 150-foot cell towers any place you want in this city. This is an outrage. Seriously. And look at what you've got for an economy right now and the real estate that the values and how they're running in this county, okay? This isn't a good position to be in. I suggest that you all take note, and you all tell the city, okay, that they need to have a second, the staff, excuse me, have a second conversation on this situation before it gets to a point that it's very serious. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring you back to the dais. City manager, we got any update on Sesame?
No, sir. That's one of your strategic action plan priorities and through the budget process, if you'd like to allocate additional funding. I will tell you that additional turning lanes is part of your impact fee that you're discussing for transportation. And mayor, just on a couple of the other public comment items, Mr. Akins, do you mind coming up and discussing the IT live streaming issues that we had last week? But for full transparency, a full audio recording is on our website for that previous meeting. That has no interruptions. But Doug, can you please give an update?
Sure. Good morning, council. Last week, we troubleshooting several different issues and found out that our upload speeds were very poor. They're between 1 and 2 meg, so that was causing the issues with the streaming. So we've switched over to our backup internet provider while we're still troubleshooting the issues with our primary internet provider, but that was the reason for the issues last week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from the dais?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to recognize Ms. Melissa Hill, the appreciation from the resident. Ms. Hill was our employee of the month for April, and I believe that was in the city manager monthly report as well. And mayor, I think that answers most of the comments, and I believe the resident got an answer about the wastewater concern.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from members of the council? Anything? Okay, thank you. We're going, we're going to move forward to Item E, Proclamations, if you would, city manager.
Sure. Those here to accept the proclamation for the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, if you'd like to come forward, please. You can stand in front of the council or...
We change it up, Mike. We, we bring everyone up. You can face about to face the audience, and then we'll read the proclamation. I'll present it, okay?
National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Whereas mosquito-borne illnesses and diseases like malaria, West Nile virus, and Zika can harm both people and animals and continue to affect lives around the world. And whereas mosquitoes make it harder to enjoy the outdoors, disrupt work, and can lower property values. And whereas these diseases can cause up to 1 million deaths worldwide each year. And whereas since 1952, the East Flagler Mosquito Control District has worked hard to protect our community through safe and effective mosquito control using monitoring, prevention, and treatment methods. And whereas the district uses advanced tools such as drones, soil sensors, cameras, and aircraft to track and reduce mosquito population in even the hardest-to-reach places, providing the highest level of service to residents and visitors. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of June 15th, 2025, be officially designated as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week and urges residents to spread the word about fighting the bite instead of spreading mosquito-borne disease in our community. Signed, this 17th day of June, 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, city clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
Take a couple pictures, and then we'll let you speak, okay? Thank you. Michael, Mike, you can step up to the podium if you'd like to say a few words to the audience.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for recognizing this. Life wouldn't be possible here without mosquito control. It just wouldn't be because mosquitoes carry the most dangerous diseases. They, they are considered by experts to be the most deadliest animal in the entire world because they have killed more people than any other cause, including you, all the human wars in existence. So we've been here fighting for you for 73 years. This is Jules Kwiatkowski. Jules has been a commissioner for 17 years. He's given a big part of his life to help protecting you. We want to ask you to educate yourselves about how to protect yourselves from mosquitoes because the most deadly mosquitoes are the container mosquitoes. These mosquitoes breed in very tiny protected pools of water. They can lay eggs in as little as a quarter inch of water. So I want to encourage everybody to look around your homes, look around your neighbors' homes, and make sure you don't have any sources of standing water anywhere. Don't leave, if you have a dog bowl outside, make sure you dumped the dog bowl before three days. If you have a bird bath and you don't have an agitator in the bird bath, again, change the water. If you have an inflatable kiddie pool in your backyard, turn that over after the kids finish playing with it. Don't let water accumulate anywhere. It's amazing where mosquitoes can find. If you have a tarpaulin over a woodpile or over a boat in your backyard, make sure you keep that tarp tight so there's no sags in it. Because again, a quarter inch of water, mosquitoes will lay their eggs in it. So we're asking you to educate yourselves, to help us to protect you. And as always, if anybody has any mosquito problems and you live here in Palm Coast, we are here to protect, to protect you. So just go on our website, flaglermosquito.com, lowercase, all one word, flagmosquito.gov. We changed it a couple of years ago. It's lowercase, one word, flagmosquito. You can go on, and you can scroll down to the tips section and fill out the form, and we'll send somebody out to help you deal with your mosquito problem. So again, thank you for all of us for supporting us, and please help us to protect you. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to move on to Item F, Minutes. We have two, two sets of minutes, June 3rd, 2025 Business Meeting, and June 10th, 2025 Workshop. Any alibis or amendments to the minutes? And get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
Got a, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Okay, we're going to move on to Item G, Appointments. Appointment one member to the Code Enforcement Board, city manager.
Yes, mayor. In your agenda packet is the application for the appointment of the passing of Mr. Mungford. The applicant is the current alternate on the code board, and he was the only applicant in this selection process.
Is that applicant here today? Raise your hand. Let me see it. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, could, what do we need to do, Marcus? Do we need discussion, make a motion? Okay, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, second?
I'll second.
We got a second. Any discussion?
Sounds like he's qualified.
Okay, we'll open this up, the public comment, real quick. Anyone have any comments concerning? No public comment. I'll bring it back to the dais. Ms. Cook, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're moving on to Item H, Ordinance of the Second Read. See attorney?
Yeah, we have a 2025 ordinance amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 4 Fire and Rescue Impact Fees, Code of Ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, to adjust rates based on comprehensive study, including an extraordinary circumstances study.
Yes, sir. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering. There have been no changes since the first reading. There are a couple of minor edits in, corrections in the ordinance that were made, but that, no changes to the proposed fee.
And in your agenda packet is the requested breakdown of what the impact fee is per dwelling unit and the percent increase.
Yeah. At the end of the Transportation One, Fong will present a slide that shows all three impact fees, park, fire, and transportation, and what that impact is on a residential dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any discussion for the dais, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so, and, and I apologize that I missed this the first time around because I know we made some amendments to the actual, I think it's in Exhibit, yeah, Exhibit A to the ordinance. But this is also in the Parks and Rec, and I believe it may be in the Transportation as well. If you look to Section 29-106, it makes some exemptions from payment of the impact fees. My concern is how this may exempt accessory dwelling units. And while right now in the city, we don't have accessory dwelling units based on some potential changes out of Tallahassee, as well as our own evaluations of our land development code as we consider accessory dwelling units because I've heard that be tossed around to address some of our affordable housing issues. I'm concerned that Section 29-106 may exempt accessory dwelling units because if you read it, it's a little vague. So it says, "The following shall be exempted from payment," and it mentions alterations or expansion of an existing dwelling unit, which does not increase the number of families. But an accessory dwelling unit wouldn't increase necessarily the number of families, but it could still increase the, the
Impact.
Impact on the infrastructure and the needs. If you read on, it says, "The replacement of an existing dwelling unit where no additional dwelling units are created." To me, what does that mean? Is an accessory dwelling unit considered its own separate dwelling unit? I don't know. And then it says, "Accessory structures to dwelling units such as storage sheds, screen enclosures, or garages." Obviously, that's not going to add to an impact to infrastructure, but I just, I looked to legal and maybe to staff. Do we have anything else that would, that is looking ahead? Because this is for the now, but it's not looking into the future. If we start to, if we do decide to allow accessory dwelling units, how do we account for that impact on the impact fees? And let's make sure it's not exempted in this one section.
Would we be able to edit this in any way after the fact if a law changed some definition within this?
From a general perspective, yes.
Like, we wouldn't be upping the fees, but we could change this to say...
Yeah, if a new law came, say, in your hypothetical, a new law came, came in, yes, we could amend our code to adapt to the law how this council sees fit. Yeah, that is an opportunity this council could...
So I don't know if we want to try to define it now or, as long as we have the tools available to us to fix it later, if that becomes a problem.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't have an issue with that if I could guarantee that somebody else would be as concerned about adding accessory dwelling units and the strain that those could put on infrastructure as we are. So I, I would like to take the opportunity to do it now if, if the council is willing to do that. And I think there can be some small adjustments made to this section to make sure we're not exempting literally accessory dwelling units as that is defined, I think, in a lot of our minds as really efficiencies that can add, you know, one or two people to a dwelling.
Yeah, Ms. Pontieri is bringing up good points, and I'm just looking at the definitions here in 2999. This is not a, going to, this is not coming to a solution, just bring it to your attention. So it says, "Accessory building or structure, a detached subordinate building, the use of which is clearly indicated and related to the use of the principal building or use of the land, and which is located on the same lot as the principal building or use." So that's how your code right now defines an accessory building or structure. And then your dwelling unit is defined as one or more rooms designed, occupied, or intended for an occupancy as separate living quarters, with cooking, sleeping, sanitary facilities provided within the dwelling unit for the exclusive use of a single family maintaining a household. So just wanted to bring those to your attention as you bring this up.
So would any edits to this be a problem in terms of our readings?
Would that be considered minor change?
I, I think, I would argue it's a minor change.
So we can do that right now and continue on to strike that exemption?
Sure. So how would we, do we just want to remove it? What do you think is the best?
Hold on a second. I've got a question on the, on your definition of a dwelling unit, so expansion. So what about a garage? Somebody, could we, this came up during short-term rentals as far as, you know, that would be defined as a room or, you know, things of that nature? I mean...
The way it reads...
Yeah, we, we were concerned with conversions of garage.
Right, but it says does not increase the number of families. That, just because you're adding, you, you could still be adding capacity and impact without necessarily increasing the number of families.
I, I think it could be done with a note. You could say, it's just, "In that particular, the following shall be exempted." You would say, "With the exception of," and then put a note, note, and then add that definition of what...
So we're exempting from the exemption?
Yeah. Well, and you could add it as a note and define, and, and the note would refer to what an accessory living unit is.
Could we just strike the exemption, Marcus, and move along?
Well, I don't know that, I, because I, and I appreciate that suggestion, mayor. I just don't know if exempting the entire, or striking the entire section is prudent because I do think that it's well-intended. And, and at the time, accessory dwelling units weren't contemplated. They are now. So I'm wondering if the, the best route is to say, "The replacement or addition of an existing dwelling unit where no additional rooms are created or living space is created," something to that effect?
Bedroom.
I mean, technically, right now, we don't, well, we are. We're, well, not the, sorry, this sausage making is going on right now inside my head. So for fire impact fees, it's only dwelling units. So I don't, if we're, if you're adding an accessory dwelling unit, I think that there should be an impact fee for that. I do. Because I think what we're going to see, if we do allow dwelling units in the future, we're going to see them probably be rented out very often, and that should be considered, just like any other dwelling unit. So my concern is just making sure that if that happens, we're not exempting ADUs from impact fees because that could be, that could be potentially argued.
Yeah, it could be adding two people to every home, essentially.
Yeah.
They'll be using the roads, the parks, the fire services, everything. So I agree. I just, I, I mean, I agree with it, whatever the best way we think that we can do to accomplish this.
Yeah, to your, thank you, Councilman Mill. I appreciate your support on this. I think to Councilman Sullivan's point, maybe we add a subsection D and just say, "Accessory dwelling units shall be treated as an additional dwelling unit for impact fee purposes," and, and is not an exemption beneath this section?
Fair enough.
Does that accomplish it?
I think so.
So you're saying accessory dwelling units are not exempt pretty much?
Correct.
Because that would bring more people to that home.
Right.
You could add the notes for the defined, defining what an accessory...
Can we do that, a minor change, and move on and approve it? Marcus?
Let me process this for a second, sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I should have caught this the first time around, and it just, I didn't think about it then.
No, that's it. So I don't even think we needed to find it. We just say, "An accessory..." We just say accessory dwelling unit, and we add it as a D, and that's a minor change. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion to approve with that change, Vice Mayor?
I will, is there any other, I don't want to bogart any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
Just on fire. Okay, no.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the fire impact fee ordinance with the addition to Section 29-106, exempting from the exemption accessory dwelling units as being exempt from impact fees.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Are you good with that, Marcus? You good? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Any public comment concerning this second read ordinance? Seeing no one come forward, I will bring it back to the dice. Any final comments? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gimbaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I just make a, just something to staff? As we look over our LDC, I imagine we'll have to probably make some type of note that we need to ensure accessory dwelling units are subject to impact fees. So I would imagine there's nothing like that in our code right now because we don't allow accessory dwelling units. But while it's at the top of my brain, I just want...
Understood.
Got it? Okay, we're moving on to item five. City attorney?
Yes, sir. So we have another 2025 ordinance amending Chapter 29 impact fees, Article 3, Park System Impact Fees, Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, to adjust rates based on a comprehensive study, including extraordinary circumstances study.
Thank you, sir.
This has the same section?
It is, but it's numbered differently.
If it's there, make it the same exception, exception to the exception.
Yeah, this section in the same Exhibit A is Section 29-78. And it tracks the same language. It would be adding a number four, not a subsection D, but the same language.
Right. You tracking, city attorney, you got it? Ms. Cook's bobbing her head, yes, she's tracking it.
Yes, sir, we got it.
Okay.
As long as the rest of council is in agreement.
We'll give, sir.
I can share for the record.
So any discussion on this second read of this ordinance?
So I think this might be a good time to talk about the overall impact to housing affordability. We've got that one chart that kind of lays out the percentages and everything else out for that.
Carl, are you able to pull that up?
Pull that up. Everybody can see it. That's it, right there.
Chart here shows the calculation. On the, the column on the left is existing fee per dwelling unit, and then it shows park and recreation at 182801, fire rescue at 434.51, and transportation for a typical average household in Palm Coast at 2,000 square feet at 3502. So the total current impact fee cost for those three impact fees is 5,764.52. The second column shows the revised fee that was being proposed today. So Parks and Rec goes up to 3164, which is a 73.1% increase. Fire Rescue goes up to 942, which is 116.8% increase. And then transportation would go up to 7,540, which is 115.3% increase. However, there is an asterisk because the existing ITT dwelling lots have a reduction. Don't pay that full fee. Their fee is only $5,770. So any new developments, the total increase would be 102% for all three fees, but it would be less for those building on ITT lot.
Why?
We can let Fong describe that.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Back in 2018, we made that decision relating to the ITT platted lots. The reason, one, the primary reason is that because it already came with infrastructure attached to it. So ITT developed with all the infrastructure for those platted lots. And that's one of the reasons why we had a reduction for those ITT platted lots.
Still, it's still an impact on the, on the city, though.
Well, that's why they only pay a partial deduction, because a lot of the roadways were built by ITT with the lots that accommodated the build-out, you know, and so there's a minor deduction, 5,700. Do you know how much the percent was?
No, I don't recall the percentage of reduction, but they still pay impact fees. But because we took into consideration of the existing infrastructure that was built versus just a brand-new vacant lot that's going to be subdivided, and then they basically generate new impacts to the system that may require additional infrastructure to be provided.
Well, I have a question on the methodology because it's still, it's still an impact, and you have to, you have to account for inflation and cost of goods and services. So you have something, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, what's the mechanism? Because it's my understanding when we were taxing our brains to try to figure out how we can keep commercial as low as possible, not as low as possible, but lower than the impact on residential in order to encourage commercial, that we couldn't kind of cherry pick. So what is the mechanism that we use to be able to cherry pick ITT lots?
The, I think that was part of the city council back then make that, make that decision.
But how? What tool did they use to be able to do that?
The tool that... Sorry. Okay, so one of the primary ones that I stated is basically, infrastructure has been already provided, like roadways have been already provided to accommodate the about 40-something thousand platted lots. But Jonathan said that there is an actual calculation that went with it.
Good morning, Ca. Can I jump in here? So I think what the Vice Mayor is saying is that we were told there was no legality in having kind of separate rates for different types of parcels a couple of meetings back when we were talking about commercial versus non-commercial. So now we're saying there is separate rates, so that's where the questions are coming from.
Jonathan Paul, New Urban Concepts Principal. Back in 2018, we recognized a shorter trip length for the ITT platted lots to account for the roads that were already built. So the actual calculation, it uses a shorter trip length. So it's not a random, just guesstimate. We actually use a shorter overall trip length in terms of the impact. Commercial uses have their own trip length associated with them as well. So, you know, if there was a specific area of the city that you wanted to look at in further in terms of evaluation of shorter trip lengths versus longer trip lengths, there's a technical way to do that. This is a process that was established back in 2018, and we've also recognized that this go-around as well. It's roughly, I think, a 15 or 20% reduction in terms of overall trip length. So there is a technical basis for it. It's not just a random calculation.
But you just said that that council chose to use that different trip length, correct? So it's not a mandatory trip length that we have to choose to use. Is that correct?
At the time, the direction was to recognize the existing infrastructure that was already in place. The technical way to do that is to recognize a shorter trip length. So that, we're only doing that because that was the direction that was provided at the time. If this council so says that, you know, that's not the direction any further, then essentially that rate would be, you know, eliminated, and it would just fall back to what everybody else pays for residential, for multifamily, it would just fall under one of the general categories. That was just a specific request. You could make a specific request and say, "The town center here." You could say, "The town center, you know, had a reduction in fees."
I'm sorry, I've got to tell you, I am flabbergasted that we are just now hearing about this. And the reason for that is we have been killing ourselves up here trying to, trying to balance interests between making affordable housing, making housing affordable for our workforce, our first responders, our teachers, our nurses, all these folks that we know oftentimes have apartments or townhomes. And if we're talking about town center, I think there very well could be an argument made that that is a shorter trip length. And so that, that should alter the calculation. Whereas ITT lots, I hear what you're saying about, and what council may have been advocating for back then because those, what I call fingerling kind of streets were already created. But they're also all using Whiteview, Royal Palms, all of these roads that we're spending millions of dollars in expanding now, altering for safety reasons, all these things. So I'm just, I'm questioning now the entire calculation and whether or not we've done enough to provide alternatives to accommodate the affordable housing issues that not just us, but the entire state of Florida is having right now. And whether or not we're saying, we're looking at, okay, for town center specifically, should those be given a different trip length to account for, you know, the fact that town center is supposed to eventually be like this walkable kind of community?
I had a point, too. If we go back to this new rate for the 2,000-square-foot ITT dwelling unit, we don't take into account square footage. And that was one of the big things we had agreed to this time was that we would do the evaluations and the costs based on square footage. So that, it even is against that.
Yeah.
So I don't know how we can accommodate this ITT situation and have the square footage situation going on.
Vice Mayor, to the point about, like, maybe town center, I don't know. I understand what you're saying. I don't know if we want to get into those weeds because then a case could be made for a different neighborhood having a different trip length, you know? So then we're, you know, we're basically starting over at zero again.
Yeah, no, and I'm not advocating that we go back down that rabbit hole. What I'm saying is...
I share your frustrations.
I am incredibly frustrated. This, this is a once-in-a-four-year process that we have all taken very, very seriously. We, the HBA has now created a whole website as to why we're wrong, by the way, which I spent hours looking at last night to be prepared for today. And we've been sitting up here going through, and you all have been, our consultant has been wonderful, working under the gun, creating different scenarios for us and taking our direction. But this is one of those things where when we specifically ask, are we, what are the options here? This was never presented. So I'm incredibly frustrated, and I just would advise in the future that these things be given to city council as a tool. But for the ITT lots, I think that, that shorter trip generation needs to be eliminated. I could, I can understand why council may have been thinking that, but I disagree. I would advocate that this council apply the same impact fee to the ITT lots as we do the new construction, particularly because those are the most popular lots as well.
So, city attorney, can we strike that, just strike that from it and move forward with approving that second read?
Does that change the calculations much at all?
It's two separate ones, I believe, so you just remove one.
No, it does not. There's just two separate land uses that would need to be removed from the schedule. We can strike that and continue on. So everyone pays the same rate.
How does everybody feel about that? I'm good with it as well.
Yeah, we, we've done a ton of work on looking at the calculations as presented on the top part of this slide. And, and this was not part of that analysis, so it's not going to be part of the ordinance.
Right, I agree.
Thank you, sir. Can we move forward with someone making a motion, striking that portion?
Well, that's the, that's the transportation. We're not there yet. We're still on Parks and Rec, and I, we kind of took over, Councilman Gimbaro. You were getting to other points.
We'll get back to that.
I'm sorry, we got to this chart and then went off on a tangent. I apologize.
I just want to clarify, too. The square footage for transportation is based on square foot. These figures shown are just based on the average home in Palm Coast at 2,000 square feet. So that, that amount for transportation would fluctuate based on the square foot of the house.
Yeah, that doesn't change my position.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Are we good?
Well, the only thing I wanted to highlight on, on the Parks and Recs is so we're going to charge a calculated fee per dwelling unit of $3,164. And then our transportation fee is going to be $7,540. So that's a 41%, 42% of the transportation fee. So I just want to make sure this council is okay with imposing an impact fee for Parks and Rec that's almost half of what we're going to charge for our roads. Is, is Parks and Rec that important that we need to charge almost half for what we're going to do for our roads? And I just, I just posed that question to my fellow council members.
I, I think it's important, one. And then, two, you know, we went through, and they had a capital improvement plan for the Parks and Rec master plan, and we removed stuff that, you know, are wants, not needs, in the interest of reducing this. So it was higher at one point. So I think we've done the diligence to reduce that. And you look at the change, the increases, Parks and Rec is the least, the least sized increase of all of them, so.
Sometimes the slower, 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 it's slower to be a burden on the city than transportation for our... And I would also agree that this particular time on the impact fees is a very unique situation. It's extraordinary circumstances. We were slow in doing this over the years. We've all talked about that in the upcoming calculations. So it is, it is a very large increase. But I think that was the purpose of all this discussion, that we've kind of justified it based on, on extraordinary circumstances.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question, just to make sure.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the question, and just to your point, I did look at some of the, the cities that have been claimed to be comparable to our city and looked at their price per square footage versus ours. And in those comparable cities, alleged comparable cities, we are still five out of seven price per square foot, so we're still very much affordable. And, you know, and I know that's been a concern for all of us up here. So as we look at, even with these impact fees providing for the infrastructure, I think, you know, if we let infrastructure fall by the wayside, we don't help our property values. So obviously, it all, it all, making sure we have the infrastructure helps everybody, including our building and development community. So I, I hear your concern, but I think that we're still very much in that scope of this being the appropriate place to go with these impact fees.
I just want to make sure we're moving into this clear-eyed on the percentage of cost to roads.
Sure.
I'd just like to add that I feel like Palm Coast, you know, leads the way with parks in our region, and I'd like to continue that. I think we have great trails, great parks, things like that. We recognize that we have some deficiencies in youth sports fields specifically, but I think for the most part, we're doing well, and we should continue to invest in that.
Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion to approve? Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec impact fee with the same changes to Section 29-78 regarding accessory dwelling units.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion from the dice?
I'm sorry, do we need to add the removal of that new rate for 2,000 square feet?
That's transportation.
Transportation.
Thank you.
Okay, we got, we got a motion, a second. No more, no further discussion from the dice. We'll open it up to public comment. If you have a public comment concerning Parks and Rec impact fees, please come forward. Yes, ma'am?
I have a concern about everybody now...
Ma'am, if you just announced your name and for the...
Jeanne Duarte, C-section. I have a concern that everybody's now being brought up to the max rather than meeting in the middle between the ITT lots and the new 2,000-square-foot developer, whatever that is. So everybody's being brought up to the, to the max. So that should be changing rather than be one way or the other because the other way was just half of what that is. Also, too, our infrastruc, our infrastructure has to be expanded or, and maintained. So it's kind of like having a little piggy, and you're having a party. You invite 10 people to this party, and you only have one pig. But now you've got 300 people that are trying to pull the meat off of this pig. That's what you guys are doing here. You're not contributing to the party getting larger. You're taking away from everything that needs to be expanded for future use. Our infrastructure's suffering, and you can't, you can't take away from the piggy what the piggy can't give.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Denise?
Good morning, Denise Henry, P-section. I have to agree with Councilman Gimbaro on this. I think we're putting way too much emphasis on park and recreation. There is a lot of... There is a lot of people in Palm Coast that don't use them. We have great ones right now. And isn't impact fees really a fee to cover future? It's more like a capital improvement, not to be operating cost of what already exists. So I would have to agree with Councilman Gumboro. I think that should be less and we should really focus more on, on transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Anna Maria Long, Executive Officer, Flagler Home Builders Association, Palm Coast resident for 100 years now. The 2020 Park Study versus the 2025 Park Study shows an expected decrease in population. This signals an over collection, a weakened nexus and an inconsistency with proportionality requirements. These are, this is proof that no extraordinary circumstances exist. I will continue to repeat this until the end of time as my staunch belief. The US construction cost increases have, did have a stark increase during 2021 and 2022, but the data proves that those costs have stabilized in 2023 and 2024. We are now in 2025 where the, while the data is not yet published because the year is still ongoing, we anticipate that they will continue to stabilize. That shows, our, being in the construction industry, it is still quite stable. Those are your two bases for claiming extraordinary circumstances and they are false. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Dennis McDonald. If you look at the Parks and Rec now as where you were when this city, city started in 2000, it's a completely different reverse situation. In 2000, you had very few people here that had families and had any interest in actual fields to play on, you know, as Mr. Miller is, is talking about. We're talking about, the city is now moving in another direction, completely opposite of where it was in 2000. And you've got more families here in town. Yes, we do have a lot of trails. That's great to keep those up. But as far as the fields go, you know, I've seen it just by watching what's going on with the schools. Okay, there just isn't enough, you know, area and, and has been provided. So if you're going to be a city that wants to bring itself, you know, out of the, what used to be called, or what I used to like to refer to as a, a nice assisted living facility here, you know, back, you know, when ITT was building it, you know, then you've got to make some changes here. And, and you've got to support the, the infrastructure for a different type of recreation. And that's what I think that we're doing here. And I think that it is, you know, you know, time that we move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I am short. Good morning. Thank you commissioners for being here. I'm Shaleen Nestis, 14785 Old St. Augustine Road. I'm here to advocate for fair and lawful impact fee policies that support legitimate infrastructure while preserving housing affordability and economic stability. There are several negative impacts to these excessive high impacts, including harming housing affordability, pushing development and jobs out of the city over to neighboring cities, signaling poor planning and overreach by the city and violating legal probability standards. Our position is that Palm Coast can address this infrastructure need within the existing legal framework, similar to other municipalities that you've visited in all of your studies. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment? See, no one come forward. We'll bring it back to the dais. Any closing comments before we vote?
I, I do, Mayor, and I want to specifically do it underneath the Parks and Rec and just, just make it a statement that I think is really important regarding these impact fees. It's our job to maintain, obviously, our current quality of life and try to improve it if possible without raising our taxes and without raising fees on current residents. There's been some talk about whether or not we're shocking the system. And when we first looked at all of these fees, we thought that maybe with the first kind of iteration of them, with everything on our shopping list that we wanted out of the impact fees, that we could be shocking the system. So we made adjustments and we took a lot of time to specifically analyze the effects on our, our building community and on affordable housing. I don't feel that our fees that we're implementing today or that we're going to vote on are shocking the system. We are course correcting. We, we had to borrow $3 million from our general fund for our fire stations because we weren't collecting enough in fire impact fees. We had a, a slow pay system, so a gradual easing in of the last round of impact fees for Parks and Rec. And because of that, we weren't able to do some of the projects that we've wanted to do or we've had to use general fund monies to do things that I, I feel we probably could have used impact fees for. So we are course correcting with what we're doing here today. We've been fair, we've been calculated, we've been very reasonable in our efforts to ensure growth pace for itself while at the same time not outpricing our essential workforce, young families and young professionals beginning their careers. If we don't collect these impact fees, we are derelict in our duties. We are, we are not doing what we should be doing for not only our current residents, but also our future residents. And I will say too, for, for Parks and Rec specifically, it's really important to recognize that we cannot collect impact fees from commercial. Residential is it. That's it for impact fees. We've all been really concerned about what raising the impact fees will do to our commercial development. If anything, these are the ones that should be raised. The Parks and Rec impact fees should be raised because they don't affect commercial. So this is absolutely the direction that this council should go. I commend this council and staff for working hard to get us here. And I hope that we can get this, that we can get this passed and through today.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comment? Yes, sir.
As we look at this overall slide, because kind of this is where I've been focused as we, we looked at this problem set and, and an assessment. You know, we came in with the recommendation from staff was that $12,774 just on the transportation fee alone, it was coming in around, you know, 137. So right now, we've been able to, to work to, to lower it, to get it down overall. So if somebody buying a new home to $11,646, okay, from the $5,764. And as close to 100% as we could per Councilman Sullivan's request, we're getting close. So I think this shows that, you know, the art of the compromise and trying to, to do what's right and tackle the issues, our, our current and future issues. And it's, it's been, it's been great working with the team here to, to get to that point. So thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumboro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to I ordinance of the first read of legal counsel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have another 2025 ordinance amending chapter 29 impact fees, Article 2, Transportation Impact Fees, Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, to adjust rates based on a comprehensive study, including an extraordinary circumstances study.
Good morning again, Mayor and City Council. Per your direction on the June 10th workshop, with the 30 million in potential funding, we're bringing back to you the findings and the outcome of that. So Mr. Jonathan Paul will present most of the presentation this morning. I will conclude with a, a several slides.
Thank you, sir. Yes, John.
Good morning, council members. Jonathan Paul, Principal of New Urban Concepts, presenting today the first reading of the Transportation Impact Fee update. At our last meeting, we were given direction to remove US Highway 1 from the list of future needs, to revise the segments of State Road 100 to limit the improvements from Bel Air to Old Kings, consider rates per square foot for residential uses and to assume roughly $30 million in available funding. On the 3rd of June, we had presented this list. We had already removed US 1 at that time. This shows the old limits of State Road 100. Since that time, we've further reduced that limits between Bel Air and Old Kings. The last time we presented to you, the cost of the overall plan was $124 million. At this point, it's $101 million. The cumulative effect of all those changes in addition, well, actually on the June 3rd hearing, we had run an analysis with $50 million of funding available to offset some of that cost. And the rate was $455 per unit of measure. We've since revised the overall list, but we've reduced also the, the funding available. So that's given us a base number of $553 for a unit of capacity. And how that plays into the actual calculation of the fees, we're looking at considering going to a square footage basis for residential units. So under that calculation, a thousand square foot single family residential unit would pay $3,770. A 1,600 square foot unit would pay a little over $6,000. And a 2,000 square foot unit, which is the typical size of a single family home within Palm Springs, would pay $7,540 for that 2,000 square feet. So comparing that to where we are today, at a thousand square foot to the current per dwelling unit rate of the city, the current rate is $3,500 for a single family home. Per thousand square feet is $3,770. That represents roughly an 8% increase. The prior discussion was over what size is sort of a starter home and the roughly the 1,600 square foot was mentioned. So as an example, a 1,600 square foot home, the impact fee would be $6,000 versus the $3,500 today. That's a 72% increase. And then if you look at the standard size of a home within the city of Palm Coast, it is 2,000 square feet. That fee would be $7,540. And that represents roughly 115% increase. When we originally did the calculations, I believe the increase for the single family was roughly 137%. So it has come down based on some of the direction that you provided to us. And also depending on the square footage of the home, larger homes would potentially go up a little bit higher. Smaller homes are going to come down lower in terms of an overall percentage. That is one way a number of communities are looking at to at least help address the affordability issue. Doesn't solve it, doesn't meet all the needs that are out there, but it's at least one step in that direction. So the calculations in terms of the fee itself has stayed uniform throughout the overall process. Just the factors that we've used going into the calculations have changed. So one of the big things going from a per dwelling unit to a per square foot, today a 1,500 square foot home coming into the city pays the same price as a 3,000 square foot home. Going forward, if you build a smaller home, you pay a smaller fee. If you build a larger home, you pay a larger fee. And that's all based on actual impacts in terms of trip generation tends to increase, number of vehicles tend to increase, number of bedrooms tend to increase as homes get larger. Does that apply to every single home built in the city? No. But on average, that is what the data shows us. We looked at the overall population and the employment, the square footage of dwelling units within the city of Palm Coast. And I wanted to see if there is any type of correlation between the number of bedrooms and the size of a unit. And we've looked at several different types of single family uses. So as you can see, and this is pretty typical of most suburban communities in Florida, as a home gets larger, so do the number of bedrooms per home. And it's pretty consistent up until the upward limits of what you see. And, and most homes within the city of Palm Coast max out at about 4,000 square foot. That's sort of the very, very top range. There's maybe a couple of them that are above that, but that represents the high range. The average is roughly around 2,000 square feet. We also look if that also applies for, for condo units. And the same thing holds true as well. As condo units increase, so do the number of bedrooms. We looked at also at town homes and multifamily units and we saw the, the same type of levels. And then this is just further data that we use in a number of our communities. We look at, is there association between the number of bedrooms and the number of vehicles owned? And again, Palm Coast is very typical of most of Florida in that there is a strong correlation between bedrooms and vehicles. Data that we use from a transportation perspective shows as the number of vehicles increases, so do the number of overall trips. And then at a certain point, it levels out, just like the, the actual square footage of a home levels out as well. So there are two technical reports that we've prepared that document all the data and analysis that go into the findings. One is specifically related to the impact fee calculation. The other is to the finding of extraordinary circumstances. And so the attached increase for the fee schedule is included in the documentation. We've shown it here with the percentages. Keep in mind, today, the existing city fees are based on a per dwelling unit basis. Going forward, they're based on a per square foot. For purposes of illustration, we show them per thousand square foot, the same as you do for office and for retail. Just like any of those uses, the actual calculation itself is on a per square foot basis. So for a thousand square foot, the rate is similar today. But as we've illustrated before, the typical home is 2,000 square feet. So that rate is really for that size of home would be $7,700 or the percentage increase would be 115%. Just in terms of numerical value to numerical value, that's the rate you see. Back in, and this is unique to Palm Coast. I've done it in a few other communities based on types of uses. There is a vested single fam, family platted lot and a vested duplex platted lot. Back when we originally did this in 2017, there was direction to look at incentivizing those, but also recognizing the potential to have shorter trip lengths due to the, the infrastructure that was in place. That was the direction as of 2018. A number of those lots have now been built. There are other needs in the communities. There's no technical basis or, you know, legal basis that you have to have those fees in there. It was a recommendation the last time. We based it on the actual data itself, looking at, at shorter trip length. So it's not just an arbitrary number. But if you as a council wanted to move forward with removing those two categories, it would not impact any of the other calculations. Simply a duplex lot would then fall under a single family attached and a single family platted lot would fall under a single family detached. So that, that's just how those would be calculated going forward. We did look at this in terms of comparisons with, with other communities. You know, Palm, Palm Coast is somewhat unique in that you are the largest municipality and you are largely, in essence, Flagler County. And so two other communities that I'm working in right now that are peer communities to you are Cape Coral and Port St. Lucie. Both of them are actually growing as fast or if not faster than you all. I would show those rates except that we're actually going through updating them right now. So in three months from now, I'll be using a Palm Coast number, but those rates are also being shown or those are being updated and they're being increased as well, potentially substantially, depending on what the direction is from their elected bodies.
I'm sorry, you said Cape Coral and who else?
Cape Coral and Port St. Lucie.
Port St. Lucie, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I think of, of the top three growing communities in the community, in the state, it's Port St. Lucie, it's Palm Coast, it's Cape Coral are three of the fastest growing cities in the state of Florida. For institutional uses, which include a variety of assisted living facilities, daycare, places of worship, the fees are going up across the board. Some of them are a little bit less because trip generation rates did not change as much from the last go around to this current timeframe. Some of them are a little bit higher because some of the rates and trip generation have changed as well. Similar to industrial uses, some of both are trip lengths. And there's two. In terms of how a fee is calculated, transportation wise, it's trip generation rate and it's trip length. So either one of those factors that have changed since the last time is going to result in a difference between the prior time in 2018 and the rates that you see today. We also have uses for, for recreation that run the gamut. We also have uses for recreation that run the gamut from a movie theater all the way down to a health and fitness club and a hotel. And those, on average, are running between 130% and 145%. Again, some of the lower percentages are also due to smaller overall numbers to begin with. Offices are projected to increase by roughly 111%. Retail rate would increase by 87%. Then it goes down through the line based on the type of use. Here's just some comparables of other communities in terms of their overall retail rates as well. Palm Coast is roughly in line with several of these. Some of the communities have not updated their fees in a long time. The rates are lower. Flagler County's late, I don't know why they've been low for, as they are, but they have been low for a very long time. They were last updated in 2021. The county itself had a moratorium for a number of years as well. But again, you are the majority of the county, so most of the needs are coming in and out of Palm Coast. Look at some of the other type of fast food uses and some other retail rates. And again, they range from a lower percentage, 47%, upwards to 114%. Again, that has to do with both trip length and trip generation changes. And so as part of this, we've done a summary of extraordinary circumstances. We do find that Palm Coast is growing faster than the state of Florida. Do project over the next 20-plus years, it's going to continue to grow as fast as the state of Florida. There was a comment earlier that saying that population isn't growing and by all metrics that we've looked at, population growth is growing quite dramatically in Palm Coast, and it's one of the fastest-growing cities in Florida. You know, in another 20 years, will it be growing as fast as that same rate? It's hard to say. I will say, you know, Port St. Lucie, we did this five years ago. They had a population of 200,000. We're updating their study now and their population's 265,000. So they've added 65,000 residents in five years. Everybody said, well, they're going to slow down, they're going to slow down. The ITT-platted lots are going to be built out and, you know, their rates are going to go down. If anything, they've gone up even higher. And we're seeing similar in Cape Coral as well. Inflation, while inflation may or may not be subsiding right now, we don't necessarily see that in the numbers. For a fact, and it's not disputable, inflation increased dramatically between 2018 and where we are today. So we're looking at what our fees were in 2018 and what they are today to bring them in line. Inflation has gone up dramatically. Will it continue to increase? Possibility that it will, and that's something that this board or the council have to look at as part of future updates. I don't believe they're going to be indexing these fees for inflation at all going forward. So, you know, this extraordinary circumstance is not necessarily forward-looking. It's where we were in 2018 versus where we are today. Inflation has increased dramatically during that timeframe. Inflation is a very relevant factor in these fee calculations. At the level that we're looking at, the cost of the plan per mile has increased by roughly During the same time period, from 2018 to today, the state of Florida's costs have increased on average 120%. At the national level, they've increased 80%. In any definition of an extraordinary, those rates are extraordinary, especially when compared to historic trends. This council, to help offset some of that impact, has recognized upwards to $30 million in available funding to help lower these fees. And again, all this is documented in the study itself, both prior population and future population. Projected growth, again, Palm Coast is going to be double, projected at least double the growth rate of the state of Florida over the next 25 years. The road improvement costs have gone up dramatically. Since we last updated this in 2018, for the state, they've gone up. You know, historically, at the national level, inflation was 1% a year. On average, the last six years, it's been 13.4%. That's pretty extraordinary. City councils also recognize funding, which averages out to roughly $1.2 million a year to help offset these costs. Based on all the factors that we look at, they've all been updated since 2018, and so they've all impacted the calculations themselves. City council had several options to consider. You actually initially considered option two. You amended the list of roadway projects, you refined it, you looked at the additional funding, you looked at the overall impact of the fee itself. That's one of the reasons why there is this whole extraordinary circumstance process to begin with, and so that means that members of the public can have comment and the city can also consider what it's looking at and make adjustments as it needs to. So in conclusion, we do believe that the city has grown fast in the state of Florida over the last 30 years. We project the city will continue to outgrow the state of Florida by an extraordinary rate over the next 20-plus years. The city has witnessed extraordinary inflation since 2018 of roughly 124%. This mirrors what's occurred at the state level of roughly 123%. At a national level, inflation's increased by roughly 80%. Again, going forward, these fees are not going to be adjusted for inflation. So your next opportunity is four years from now to address whatever has occurred during that time. So the comment is, well, inflation may be moderating. Well, if that's so, then your fees are also being moderating at this time because they're not going to be going up over the next four years. The city council has recognized 30 million in funding, which is not currently programmed, and all the values that we use are based on the most recent localized data. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fong.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Fong?
Yeah, I want to put up this slide again, so you can see the comparison between parks, wrecks and fires and transportation. So if your wish is to remove the platted IT lots, then please include it as part of your motion to remove the vested single-family and vested duplex-platted lots from the motion. So then the recommended motion is that to adopt ordinance 2025, amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 2, Transportation Impact Fees Code ordinances of the city of Palm Coast to adjust rates based on a comprehensive study, including an extraordinary circumstances study prepared by LTG and New Urban Concepts.
Thank you, Fong. Any discussion from the dais?
So unfortunately, we're going to have to go to what, it's not labeled Exhibit A, but I think it's supposed to be as a part of the ordinance because this is the first read, it's the first time we're seeing this. So if you all can travel with me there. If you look at what, we need a label on it, first of all, to say Exhibit A. But if you look at the Exhibit A for this ordinance, a couple of things that we changed in the last two ordinances need to be updated in this one as well, including making sure that impact fees are paid at building permit, not at certificate of occupancy. That is underneath Section 29-35, subsection A. If you also, there's a reference to occupancy certificate rather than building permit in section, that same section, 29-35, but it is subsection G. Says that director must collect transportation impact fees prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. It should say building permit. And then there's a couple of things that I wanted to discuss with council as well. Just a couple of those same kind of exceptions that people can apply for and get administrative approval on, which I don't think is the intent of this council to allow. Particularly, well, first, under subsection B of 29-35, there's an early payment incentive. It says administrative fees set forth in subsection C shall be waived when transportation impact fee is paid at the time of building permit issuance. Since we're changing that to building, well, I can't speak for council, but if council decides to change the time of payment of the impact fee to building permit, then we would get rid of the early payment incentive because you're paying a building permit anyways.
What line was that?
That is B of, it's on the first page, Mayor.
29, section 29-35.
Yeah, this one.
Got it. Yeah, that makes sense.
And then, under subsection D, 1B, it says there's a criteria for use of an independent impact analysis. The impact fee may be computed by the use of an independent impact analysis if, subsection B says, the applicant chooses to have the amount of the fee determined by the use of an independent impact analysis. Or C, the director determines, and director would be the Director of Community Development pursuant to the definitions in this ordinance, the director determines that the nature, timing, or location of the proposed impact generating development makes it likely to generate impacts costing substantially more or less to mitigate then the amount of the fee that would be generated by the use of the fee schedule. Two things. One, if we're using square feet, that's pretty cut and dry to me. I don't know why we need some other independent impact analysis potential here. But two, if we, as council, decide to keep this, then it should be by city council review. Any exceptions to impact fees, in my opinion, should come before council, not have a staff review. If you go down under that same independent impact analysis to 4C, again, it provides for administrative review by the director, which really then it's in only one person's hands, which should never be the case, rather than coming before city council. If you flip to the next page on subsection F, there's a reimbursement and credit section. And again, I just think that this is something that should be reviewed by city council. So it says, "The city may reimburse transportation impact fee funds paid by an applicant in exchange for the dedication or construction of capital transportation improvements." I'm definitely in favor of that option, but those things have come before council previously. I think they should continue to come before council, and I don't believe that that's clearly stated in here.
It just references the city.
Right. And then it says, "In order to be eligible for reimbursement, the applicant must receive approval," again, "by the director." So it should say "by city council." And Marcus, that's in subsection F, 2A. Sorry, I'm trying to help you track.
No worries.
The last one is underneath that same reimbursement and credits, which is subsection F. If you go to 4, it says eligibility for credits for excessive dedication or construction. Again, just thinking that this should be, that this should have a city council approval attached to it. So really, it's, I don't know if it's council's pleasure to keep D, which is the independent impact analysis. I think we should nix it since it's, we're going based on square footage. But then also, anything that is asking for any type of exception, whether that's, you know, doing construction or dedication of land in lieu of impact fees, that should have a city council approval.
I didn't see an exemption section like the other two. Did you?
No, I did not see an exemption section.
There is, so it's 29-34. It has them listed differently. And so you go to D, and then it kind of says, these are all the exemptions. It's not written the same way, but it's similar. So I was just going to add it to D, have a nine, and say, and so accessory dwelling units are not exempt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Marcus, for finding that. Also, if you go to, under that same section, 39-3, oh, sorry, 29-34, under that same exemption section, which is D, type of development not affected exemptions, it says it, it doesn't apply to, and then if you go down to 5, it says development agreements. "No transportation impact fee may be imposed on impact generating development that is the subject of a duly executed and lawful development agreement entered into prior to the effective date of this article, which agreement contains provisions in conflict or inconsistent with this article, but only to the extent of the conflict or inconsistency." That's a lot of words that, to me, can get people out of paying impact fees. So I know we have a lot of development agreements out there. I think some of them, I know for a fact the DRIs out West are expired, but I don't, based on this language, I don't know if they would be exempt from paying the new impact fees or if they would have to pay the old impact fees. It's just not clear because technically, that's a development agreement.
Yeah, but the development agreement would have to say that, like, somehow.
Yeah, so if...
It'd be exempt.
If the development agreement has a specified impact fee schedule within that development agreement and this conflicts with it, then they would pay the other fee.
Okay, so is that, okay.
That's how I would, yeah, that's how I would read it.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Like, for instance, those DRIs wouldn't really matter unless they were to be activated, which is highly unlikely. And I don't even know if there's any language in there for impact-related costs, so.
And I don't know, that was just an example. I don't know if there's others out there that exist. But if that's what that means, then, you know, obviously, we can't violate a prior agreement that, I guess, dictated certain fees, but I would, that's just confused me.
What about a land donation as part of that agreement? Right?
Yeah, that would be, I would read that the same way.
Okay, okay. And then the appeals process, again, it's supposed to go before the city manager. I would advocate for the same changes we made to the others, where any appeal of impact fees should come before city council.
You tracking all those?
I will make sure those are up as long as I have direction from the entire council.
Are we, are we in consensus with the changes that the vice mayor just, and this is the first read, so...
The first read, yeah.
We'll have a chance to revisit this and...
And we're taking out the ITT.
I said last time that I welcome the future edits that the vice mayor would have, so.
And we're also getting rid of that, the ITT lot provision in there, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, Mr. Mayor, I just thought it was helpful with the other two ordinances. We saw everything and tracked changes prior to, when he sent that out, so.
We'll make sure you guys get a clean copy and a track change copy.
Thank you.
We're essentially consensus on reading one, given these changes. Yes, we're, this is the first read, we're making the edits and excluding the ITT kind of exemption thing in there, or locked-in rate or whatever.
So what I need is a motion, not direction.
We will get a motion. Vice Mayor?
I will make a motion to, Fong, will you put the language back up? I apologize. I want to make sure I track your language here. I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-XX, amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 2, Transportation Impact Fees Code ordinances, as well as the study, including the extraordinary circumstances study, with the change of removing the vested single-family lots and the vested duplex lots, as well as the, getting rid of the previous ITT lot special rates and incorporating the changes to Exhibit A for the ordinance as directed by council.
Second. Got a second. Any further discussion?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Just, and I was going to cover this at the end of the meeting, but I think it's pertinent now. You know, I think we're all cautiously optimistic that, you know, we're going to get funding from Tallahassee with regards to our AWT and the EQ tank project, so keeping our fingers crossed there. But it's an example of our efforts going up to Tallahassee and really advocating for our infrastructure requirement needs and funding. But we were, I think, one of the selling points for us is we had skin in the game in passing our utility rates and matching everything. It wasn't just, you know, handout with the state legislature. I think this impact fee, in a similar fashion, will show that we also have skin in the game as we go to look for that. But I would just ask for the council's consensus before we move forward, that this $30 million that we're expecting, Mr. Fong, you had a great list of what those look like, that we take that list and when we go to Tallahassee again next year as part of our appropriations process, you know, have that, you know, also be part of, you know, our ask, so we can start working on this now. Just make it, make sure it's a focused effort to ensure that all the calculations that we've discussed, you know, moving forward with this ordinance are, you know, are, can be attainable moving forward.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the dais? We'll open this to further comment specifically on this first read.
Hi, my name is Rich Gelner, and I'm just curious, and maybe you can answer these questions, that if the impact needs analysis was done based on 5770 for ITT dwellings, and it's now made equitable, which I think is fair, the additional revenue, because I don't really understand... um, the additional revenue, because I don't really understand how many ITT dwellings would be affected by it, but that additional revenue, times however many dwellings, is, could be significant, maybe not. But I'd like to know what that additional revenue would be? And is it, there a possibility that the overall impact fees could be reduced to meet the city's needs if the dollars were the same now that you've increased the ITT dwellings from fifty-seven seventy to make it equitable with the rest of the impact fees? Just curious.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I have a concern that the current demand and rate of growth is slowing down. Houses are sitting empty. I've seen them sit in my neighborhood for over six months now. These figures are based on economic growth that is from recent demands, recent booms, and it's based on future projected growth or booms. It doesn't take in consideration our current situation. Our economy is slowing down, and if we have a major hurricane, our economy is gonna really hurt.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Still Anna Maria Long, Executive Officer, Flagler, HBA. Um, the first gentleman who spoke, I didn't catch your name, but I also echo his concern. Um, the calculation of the, of the change in dollars, trying to calculate it back there and pull up my study copy, but the calculation difference in collecting additional fees on the ITT plotted lots, uh, that would create a significant dollar change over time. And if you're looking at the total amount of money that you're collecting, divided up by the number of homes that you'll be building in a dollar amount that you need for the impact fee total, in totality, I believe that is a number that you need to, uh, to address and look at before taking further action. Um, my particular comments about, uh, population were not that they were forecast to slow, simply that our forecast from 2020 was higher than our forecasting for 2025, um, which indicates that we now have a weakened nexus, and that is inconsistent with the proportionality requirements that the extraordinary circumstances require. For, so for you to legally claim extraordinary circumstances, you have to have the proportionality requirement as well as the, um, the nexus. Additionally, the rising construction costs, as, um, Jonathan stated, uh, and I said the first time he was here, construction costs alone are not, uh, reason for extraordinary circumstances. So once we've now disproven the population on its own as not an extraordinary circumstance, because your very studies that you've accepted showed that they, uh, we planned for higher growth than occurred, and we're now planning for lesser growth than we did previously. Um, and he stated himself to you all and to the public that their, because the construction costs alone, the rising construction costs across the country are not a cause in and of itself for extraordinary circumstances. Furthermore, the Florida state law in extraordinary circumstances require the, that the, um, the extraordinary circumstance be severe, unforeseen, and local. Uh, so now that we're projecting less growth than in 2020, and using, uh, the outdated cost spikes, as I stated previously, there, the cost spikes occurred in 2020 and 2021. Since stabilizing, and perhaps 2022, since stabilizing in twenty-three and twenty-four, and furthermore stabilizing in the current year, we, um, and are expecting further stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comment? Yes, sir?
There's, uh, one extraordinary circumstance that was missing from the list, and that's the fact that for the last twenty-five years, we lived here in this city that ITT had left, and there was a political and special interest group that ran this city, without question. You know, anybody who's lived here for a long time, has even been here recently, knows that. And I think one of the things that you're seeing is the carve-out for the, the ITT. There was lots that was done in 2018. Well, 2018, we were already eighteen years into, uh, a new city at that point. But that just goes to show you that the hand was still there, and it was still manipulating the process here, okay, for the benefit of a chosen few. And, and so you without question have an extraordinary circumstance here, and I think you've, we've finally gotten to the threshold that we can get beyond it, okay? And we can get the city moving in a positive direction, so, um, you know, and I might also add that that same circumstance, 2018 was the time that, that there was, uh, some work that was being done on the wireless program. Again, things were just inserted by a certain group of, of people that controlled this city, much to the detriment of the, the citizens that lived here and the ratepayers. Because one of the points that you made, um, very clearly was the fact is that these guys all had a deal that they didn't have to pay their impact fees upfront. How's that? How come they didn't, there was an exception made for builders to pay, be able to pay their impact fees, um, you know, when a certificate of occupancy was, was issued? You know, um, you stepped up, you gave them an approval, you gave, you gave them a building permit, pay for it, okay? They weren't paying for it. They were taking a special, they were taking an exception to that, so. Um, without question, hopefully, uh, council, you know, we're moving in the right direction, and we're gonna be, uh, someplace where, um, you're representing all the voters and the ratepayers in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the DIAS. Any closing comments before we call the vote?
Just really quickly, Mayor, I, I do want to say, I, I don't want, um, our, obviously, I'm, I'm a staunch believer in, in taking the action that we're taking, but I did look at, um, what our Building Association put together to kind of combat some of the items that we're looking at. And some of the cities that were listed on this website that were created, um, I have to push back on and say that I still feel that this is the direction that we should be going, not only because we do have extraordinary circumstances, but if you look at some of the cities that were listed to compare to the city of Palm Coast, Cape Coral, um, is one of the only two cities that's growing faster than us, and they are the most expensive per square feet on your list. Um, so, um, they are not anywhere close to being as affordable as our housing here is in Palm Coast. Um, the gentleman, our consultant here, mentioned Port St. Lucie. Uh, they're growing faster than us. Um, their impact fees, I believe, he said are being, or you said they're being looked at right now, and, um, they're much more expensive than us per square foot. The number one, um, city on the list that was created is Northport, and they are much more expensive than us per square foot. Uh, Palm Coast is the third fastest, um, city, uh, growth-wise, on the list that was provided, yet we are the fifth as far as affordability, so we are very affordable. So again, I think, you know, when we're looking at all of these statistics, and we're trying to make sure we're finding that sweet spot as where, where we're paying for growth, making sure infrastructure is taken care of, but also making sure that we remain, um, an affordable place for, uh, working families and all of our essential workers to live. I really do feel this is that sweet spot. So again, I'm just hoping that this is the vote that takes place and that we get it done, not only this reading, but also the next reading. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more comments from the DIAS?
Nope. I'm in agreement.
Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to I seven, ordinance, uh, concerning, uh, paint colors. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. We have another twenty twenty-five ordinance amending the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, Chapter thirteen relating to exterior colors.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, City Council. This is per your direction at the last workshop. The ordinance has been drafted accordingly, and staff has a short presentation, and then in front of you is also, um, the sample colors that are listed for inclusion of adding, uh, Bermuda colors. Um, and Tracy will take it away from there.
At least we're at the first read that's been, that's going on, how long? Three and a half years?
A long time. A long time.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, Barbara.
Hello, how are you? Okay, um, good morning, Mayor and City Council. Tracy Doak again, uh, zoning supervisor, joined by Barbara Grossman, Code Enforcement Manager. And we are here with the ordinance to amend the land development code to add light Bermuda colors to the approved colors. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, City Council directed staff to move forward with the ordinance to revise the LDC Chapter thirteen to add light Bermuda colors to the approved colors in the city. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash XXXX, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Section thirteen oh-two oh-six, has been drafted to incorporate this change. Chapter thirteen of the land development code addresses colors. The following are sections of the code regarding exterior colors for residential property. The proposed changes are as follows. Uh, new verbiage is highlighted in yellow. So section oh thirteen oh-two oh-six B one, light Bermuda colors. Acceptable Bermuda colors include blues, greens, lavenders, peaches and pinks with an LRV of sixty-five or greater. And then, uh, B three C, residential and multifamily are prohibited from using any shade of purple, fuchsia, magenta, and orange that have an LRV of less than sixty-five. Currently, peaches, pinks, lavenders, and blues are not allowed unless they meet the pastel requirement having a light reflective value of eighty or greater. Uh, so next steps, we have the second read for this ordinance scheduled for the July first business meeting, and, uh, staff will conduct an educational campaign to reach out to paint stores to advise them of the changes, uh, once the ordinance is adopted. And at this point, um, staff recommends approval of, um, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash XXXX, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter thirteen, adding the light Bermuda colors to the approved colors.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it?
Uh, let me, this may be a question for you, um, Barbara. I see houses all the time that are not within the, the current code, the amended code, whatever we do. Very, very dark houses. What happens when someone is cited as, and I forgot. Mindy. So what happens for houses that are outside the LRV currently? What is the city's recourse, and what can we do?
Well, you said this has been going on for a long time, so since twenty twenty-two, I think is when this started, um, as far as color, uh, where they're cited. What normally would happen in the past is you're cited with a notice of violation, giving a reasonable time to correct the violation. If the violation isn't corrected, then you would be scheduled for the next available code board, again, giving a reasonable time to correct the violation, and if not corrected, a daily fine would start.
Okay, and how much would that daily fine be?
It would depend on what the code board would want.
And what happens if someone just refuses to pay it?
The lien is normally twenty years, and then from there, we'd place another lien on the property. Um, we've had people that have painted their houses.
We need, we kind of need to discuss this for a moment. Councilman Gambaro, Councilman Miller, you remember when we were at, um, the, uh, League of Cities thing up in Tallahassee? You remember that? You remember specifically when they, they told us, and I, I jotted it down in my notes in my book from that organization, that houses that are homestead exempt in Florida can't have liens placed against them. You guys recall him saying that?
Well, that specifically, but I don't, I don't have any reason to think that that's not true.
If I may, Your Honor, I mean.
You're not in court.
I immediately, I immediately went into legal mode. No, um, what I was going to say is, I deal with this a lot, obviously, because I'm a real estate attorney, and, um, so we can't foreclose on it. But, but when they sell the property, that, that lien will have to be.
Just in through probate, it's satisfied.
Well, no, not just through probate, but there's also exceptions to, like child support. You can have a child support lien on homesteads.
So if I can add, so yes, so what if, in your situation that you're asking, Mayor, so we would put a lien on it. If the owner decides to sell that house, they have to prove that they're using it for homestead. If they, uh, homestead money, so they instantly have to add it to another homestead property. If they do not do that, then I, we, as, by the city council direction, file something with the court and say they're not using it, we are entitled to that money.
Isn't that a, isn't that a bit late?
Nope, that's standard process.
Okay.
I guess, are you asking if there's a better way, or?
Well, no, I, I think our whole, our whole, and I discussed this with, uh, Chief, uh, when we had a telephone call. I, I think that the Code Enforcement Board doesn't have any teeth. Um, say, say for parking violation. Say if it's a city parking violation, say Tallahassee. You know, you have like three days. You have three days to fix the problem or pay the fee. You know, and, and, and like I told Chief, it should go to a magistrate. We, I don't personally think we need a code enforcement board. I think we need more teeth in our ordinance, and, and if it's a legal fine, say if you parked in a swell overnight, and you're ticketed by a deputy or city code enforcement, fifty-dollar fine, you got three days to clear it up. Your due process is either you pay it or you appeal it. If you appeal it, you know, your appeal is basically saying, I'm gonna go before the magistrate.
Is that bad going?
I think, uh, my, my reason being, Marcus and everyone else, is, um, a few things. I, I've only been to one code enforcement board. And when I walked into the code enforcement board, I sat in the back, and the, the biggest thing I noticed about the code enforcement board was working boots. People that were coming in to come in front of the code enforcement board were wearing working boots. So these are working men and women that are having to take time out of their day, so maybe making fifty dollars an hour. So they're losing a fifty-dollar an hour salary to come sit in front of code enforcement board, waiting for their case to come up on the docket, and then having to go through. And another case, you have, uh, say a hoarder. I had a lady contact me about a hoarder, and I'm like, well, they have their due process. They have to go to the code enforcement board. So this person's been hoarding for seventeen years, all this junk around their house. They get a notice to appear in front of the code enforcement board. They got two months before they get to code enforcement board. They got two months to clear it up. They go in, they tell the code enforcement board, here's your pictures, Barbara. It's cleared up. Everything's cleared up, and then the cycle starts all over again.
Yeah, but if the cycle, it's not like, it's not like they get a restart. The, Ms. Grossman, can you explain, like, if they get, it's the second time, or if it's a mass violation?
Yes, what you have is the initial, uh, code case, then you have recurring, and then you have repeat. Okay, so then you go back in, and then you have massy. So you have your first time, you get it into compliance, case is closed. If it happens again, then on the agenda it has recurring. Sometimes you can have recurring go anywhere from two to four times. And then after that, we take it in, we get it, we get a, uh, order. That order then becomes, uh, you know, a repeat if you to come. We automatically don't have to do the due process. You come back to the code board, and then a massy is, is levied, and then that's when the fines are levied on the property.
And so one other thing just to add, Mr. Mayor, so at least it's my opinion. So the, the duty of the code enforcement board, it's not technically their first course is to collect fines. Their duty is to educate. So by educating all those working bees that you talk about, then they don't continue getting those fines. And a lot of times, they'll negotiate working out those fines with Ms. Grossman.
Well, well, I, I get that part, because you, you, you don't want to hammer someone too much for something. That, and, and a lot of it's, you know, petty vindictive people that, that call in. Um, we've always said since we've been here, code, code is, well, even Barbara knows, it, it's call initiate. Your neighbor is calling on you about a problem, and then you have to, you have to fix it. I had my neighbor call on me over something petty, and it ruined our relationship, and, and I, you know, and I loved his wife to death, but I couldn't talk to her, because I certainly wasn't talking to him. But I, I do think we need to look at maybe visiting how our code enforcement works. And how many, how many houses do we have liens on right now, Barbara, in the city?
Uh, I, I wouldn't be able to give you that answer right now. I, I really.
That is astronomical.
I, I don't think so, because when you figure, um, when you can do fifteen hundred cases, uh, a month, to two thousand, fifteen hundred to two thousand, and thirty-five to, to forty-five go to code board, you've educated, you've got compliance. We're not here to take punitive damage. So if you look at the overall specter of, of how many cases are out there that you do with, whether they're, uh, you know, they're action orders that you go out and you check. do with, whether they're, you know, they're action orders that you go out and you check, and then they become a notice of violation, or they, as I've said in the past, which will be coming up, notice of remedy, which are lots, I mean, that are unoccupied properties, meaning there's nobody living there, so we're mowing the lawns to keep Palm Coast to look nice, unsecure properties. So the idea is, we are out there educating, we're not out there to cause punitive damage. We do work with the people with negotiated agreements. It's to, it's to keep Palm Coast nice.
Well, it's not about revenue gener, that's not what I'm trying to get at, Barbara. It's not about revenue generation for the city, it's nothing about that. It's about, you know, compliance and, and even, even on these paint colors, I think we settled on changing, changing it to allow more colors. But, you know, you're, you're taking, it's almost like an HOA, you're, you know, like the lady back there, this is, her whole things, this whole process started because of her house. And I think her house is, is not my favorite color, but, you know, people like darker colors, especially people from up north, you know, not everyone wants this. So I would, I, I'm still of the mindset of completely getting rid of the paint color, as long as it's three colors, three colors, no polka dots, you know, and, and really, the magentas, the, the band colors. We were looking at adding yellow to the band colors, our first meeting on this, when this council was seated. And yellow is a very pleasant color to me, so, but that's just my take.
Except for that Palm Coast yellow you mentioned? Palm Coast yellow and Palm Coast beige?
No, no, that's Palm, no, that's Palm Coast beige and Palm Coast gray. As a matter of fact, Mr. Maurice that was here last week, his house, city manager, you sent me a picture of that paint slab, right, of those? That is not a very dark gray that he had, and it was outside of the ordinance. But I had, there's a house right off of Whiteview, brand new house, that, that house is dark, almost battleship gray. And I know that house is going to fade in two years, and they're going to have to repaint it.
In terms of the mechanisms that you're talking about, in terms of enforcement, and what methodologies we have and things like that, I'm happy to give consent to have staff research that and bring that back to us, so that we can discuss kind of what the teeth are, because I think that's applicable for a lot of code, not just this one.
Yeah, maybe a code enforcement workshop.
Yeah, something like that. So more than happy to discuss that further.
Just one thing I will add, so I will say the mechanisms that we do have, they do work. We had, I'll give you one example, there was one house that was not in compliance. We were working with them, and then finally, me and Barbara moved forward to foreclose on the house, and we, we filed the complaint. And once we filed the complaint, they brought the house up into compliance, and they, they had like two or three years of liens, and they paid off all the liens and then sold the house. So I will tell you, from working it off with Barbara, the mechanisms do work, it just, it's a process. Due process does take time, as Ms. Pontier will tell you, it's like, it's not speedy. Due process will take time, no matter what you do.
Yeah, but let's say, for the person that's being offended, three months is a long time. If you're sitting there and your neighbor across the way is a hoarder, and you, you just put your house on the market, and you got to wait three months just for them to clean up their lot, so you may get the price you wanted for your house. That's what I'm talking about, you know, it's, it's the, the person that's being offended and, or has a problem with it, and the person that's, you know, being targeted for the enforcement. Two months is a long time for due process on a simple matter of your garbage can was out on the curb.
Yeah, I, I think we have to look at the, the per violation, unfortunately, because if we're talking about repainting a home, that can be very expensive.
At minimum, $6,000.
That's different, you know, than, you know, two months, someone might need more, would likely need more than two months to save. I mean, the average home only has $1,000 in savings, so we have to consider that as well. But I, I think a workshop on this topic is definitely overdue, so I definitely would give my consensus for that, and we can look at it holistically.
Yes, ma'am. And what about as far as the houses that started this whole process? What about her house? How does this work out? So, okay, we, we, we adopt the ordinance, we update everything on the next read, we put it into effect, you know, is there any grandfathering, grandfathering in, any allowances, or you're going to have to paint your house?
There's been no direction from this council to grandfather anyone in.
Okay.
I thought we discussed that a little bit, based on the form or something like that last time.
Yeah, I'll pipe up here, because I had asked if there could be a grandfathering in, based on what I understood was the issue, but I was incorrect in what happened. So I thought that on the form, if you look at where it says earth tones, and then in parentheses, it has shades of brown, brown taupe, sandy taupe, beige, terracotta, sage, and gray. I misunderstood, that I thought previously, blue was in that parentheses, but blue has never been in that parenthesis. So I thought there was going to be a change that would allow Ms. Melendez to be grandfathered in, but I was incorrect. So based on that, I don't think there would be anything to grandfather. I have met with Ms. Melendez as early as yesterday and advised a process that could be taken, following our city, our normal city process, based on her circumstances, because I do feel for her circumstances. But I think it is unaffected by this ordinance, this is something wholly separate. And as far as the direction, I will tell you, I've gotten comments and emails and contacts from residents who want to see us expand the, the color wheel, so to speak, a little bit. And then I've gotten some who have said, no, keep things exactly the same. I've gotten, most of them are okay with a, with a little bit of a change, which is why I advocate for this direction, because it's, this is tough. This is like the, the work vehicle issue. You've got some people who say, no, don't change a thing. And you've got some people who say, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with cars with, you know, business logos being parked in the driveway. So, you know, it's tough. But I, I'm certainly not basing my opinion on this one case and advising that Ms. Melendez go through a certain process that the city provides for.
So I have a question. Blue, then where does blue fall in on this, on this sheet?
The light shades of blue that are within the LRV, correct, Barbara? Say that the LRV, I, I, I understand the method, methodology behind it, because I own a paint company. But I do know that those darks house, like Ms. Melendez's house, I do know it's going to fade quicker, because the sun's going to be down on it. But like Ms. Melendez says, I don't care, Mike, I'll repaint my house when it fades. Is that what you say, Ms. Melendez? That it's my choice, it's a personal choice, and I personally, you know, for me personally, I don't think we should have an ordinance that restricts, you know, that, that personal freedom to paint your house what color you want. Will there be vindictive painting schemes or colors, as long as we stay within the tri, the three? Will there be people that paint their house to be vindictive to their neighbors that's given them guff for 10 years? Of course there will be. But we are in a free society, and, you know, eventually, it's hard to sell a house that's ugly color. Curb appeal is, is a big deal.
But to your point, Mayor, is it also hard to sell a house that's across the street from an ugly color?
That's what I'm saying.
So, so, so we live in a, you said earlier, you know, someone shouldn't have to live across the street from a hoarder. Should someone have to live across the street from, you know, one of the magenta colored homes? So again, it's this fine line, right? You know, I mean, how do you apply one thing one way and not another way? I think it's really dancing that very fair line.
Most people, most people are reasonable people, and they want to keep up their property value, and they don't want to affect their neighbors. I remember my mom, when I was a kid, she painted her house, she worked for a manuf, tobacco manufacturing company, and it was a green. Our house was painted a pile manufacturing green. But that's just my opinion, but I'm, you know, whatever the council wants to do on this ordinance on the first read is.
Well, I, I argued the same thing, Mr. Mayor, during this, the last discussion about this, that I didn't think that restrictions were appropriate. I do understand the concerns of like, what if someone's going to paint their house safety orange, or something like that? I don't think that that's something that people will do.
Reasonable people don't do things like that.
Right, and, and so the unreasonable people are going to do things against the rules anyways, just like the hoarding and things like that. So, you know, I was arguing the same thing, so, you know, I don't know where we stand as a full council in terms of this. Obviously, you know, it would have to be three votes in order to, to get it done in the direction that we are advocating for. Either way, I think there should be an expansion of colors, whether it's a compromised version of that or the full.
You know, I'm just, I'm, I'm coming in late to this, and, and really, I wish we could write the rule that people should paint their homes with a reasonable color, but it, it doesn't work. And, and so we, I think we need to have some kind of restrictions on the colors, and I see the changes that we're asking for now seem to be, I mean.
I think my only.
It is reasonable.
My only thing is, is that we can all agree, and everybody's, you know, kind of taste is different in decorating and things like that, but there's definitely homes that are against the rules that look fine, look great. There's homes that are within the rules that I don't think look great. So that's the question, is where do, where do we want to fall on this? Like, is it just our opinions on what looks great is what matters, and not give the residents the, the leeway to choose what's best for them?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you all base the expansion on other cities?
Yeah, this is, we've been talking about expanding colors for several years, and we did research on other cities in, you know, within Florida, and this is what we came up with in order to add color, but not to be too extreme.
Yeah, so to kind of your point, Councilman Miller, I don't, I wouldn't say that it's, I mean, yes, of course, we're the ones voting, so there's an amount of our opinion that's being inserted, but I remember staff saying that they had based it on, you know, other cities around the state of Florida, so.
So when it, how much, maybe, is anyone mind if Ms. Melendez steps up to the mic?
I would.
Because I want to know what her LRV on her house is, that's all I need to know. And how far off is it from our?
Well, hold on, I think that staff should be able to answer that question.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So how far off is the LRV from what is currently on the books to Ms. Melendez's house?
I think Ms. Melendez has told me in the past that her house is a 12. Okay, I think you had said that one time, because in our, it looked to be like a six or seven, and I thought you said it was a 12. But she would have to be, if, if this ordinance goes through, if you approve what we have here right now, it would have to be a 65. So it's quite a bit of a difference. Yes. And currently, as the code is now, would have to be an 80.
Well, we'll let you speak when we get the public comment, Ms. Melendez.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, the, the only comment I'll make, and it's kind of echoing something the vice mayor had said on, on commercial vehicles in our residents, you know, in our, in our neighborhoods, we have to draw the line somewhere, right? And so I think, I think this proposed ordinance is, as Councilman Sullivan said, it's a reasonable approach to, 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 you know, tackling this issue.
Yeah, but I don't, I really, I don't think, to me personally, it's not going, these, these are all lighter, it's not going into the darker range. You know, people that like darker, darker houses, it's, it's still restrictive, but, you know, we got to have, there's, there's rules. So can we get a, are we, are we done with this, or?
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up with staff was, if you look at the actual form, I think there's a, a level of subjectivity that we need to eliminate. So if you go to the prohibited colors portion, it says prohibited colors are fluorescent, loud, clashing, or garish. Those are all subjective. So fluorescent is obviously, that has a definition to it, but loud, clashing, and garish, it's, I think it should just say fluorescent colors, and then any shades of purple, fuchsia, magenta, what it already says.
Yes, we did remove the fluorescent from the verbiage in, if the code changes, we weren't going to take that fluorescent out, because it is subjective, and also the loud, clashing, and garish.
Yeah, so we need to come off the ordinance and the form, because I, I think I saw the same language tracked.
Right. We, we didn't change the form until we get pre-wrote where we're going.
Sure, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think you were saying that, you were saying the fluorescent.
No, fluorescent is fine to stay if that's the, the, the direction of council, because that has a definition, but loud, clashing, and garish does not. So those are what I would advocate to eliminate with the consensus of council, just so that we don't have that level of subjectivity in it.
I would agree to that. Gentlemen, you agree to that?
I do, yes.
That is too subjective.
I have an, I have another question. In terms of the earth tones, the, the colors that are in the parentheses are how we're defining earth tones, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if, maybe just adding a word at like, defined as with those colors. That way, we know exactly what's going on there. I think there was a question with, with Mindy in terms of the confusion of that specific portion, so just clearing that up, I think would help as well.
Or maybe even a link, if it's online, click on it, this is what's allowed, what's not allowed.
And just, corny clever, you're just talking about the form right now, not the actual ordinance.
Does the ordinance mirror that wording?
I think it does, to the extent it does.
If there's a, if there's a change for one, then it should be for both then, yeah.
Understood.
I'll make sure, if this gets passed, I'll make sure go through and clarify the differences.
Thank you.
Other comment? Well, like even earth tones, if somebody were to search Google, is navy blue an earth tone? You know, what's going to be the answer? You know, navy blue is a dark blue. And, but really, dark, there's stuff in nature that's dark blue.
Yeah, and I think that was the, the source of the confusion, or part of it, at least in this distinct situation, you know, maybe more that we're unaware of.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, let's get.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the ordinance for the changes that we outlined.
We got a motion to approve, we got a second. No further discussion from the dice, we'll open up public comment. Yes, Ms. Hatfield?
Good morning, Paulette Hatfield. I've been here in the fifth, F-section since 1992. I just want to remind you all, this is Florida, folks. We don't have the idea of, of having rules. We were parents, our parents always had rules for us, so we knew what our parameters were. And I think 25 years ago, when our, when our forefathers decided to create this charter for ITT, they decided that code enforcement, that other departments needed to have rules. And it is my understanding that if you want to paint the exterior of your home, you go to code enforcement, and they give you a form, and you fill out the form with a color that they will either deny or approve. So for me, I think that the rules that we have and the colors that we have are great. Bermuda colors are fine, light colors are fine with a, a light value of, of 65 or greater. I just feel that we need to have some preservation of our customs and our rules that we've had for 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. I tend to agree with the general principle of this is America, you should be able to paint your house whatever color you want. I also understand that that extends to hoarding, right, because it's their property, and they should be able to do whatever they want with their property. But I think the real simple solution to this would be just no neon colors, and let everyone paint their house whatever color they want, because the new construction that's going on around the corner from me, all those new houses are being painted white. Is that an earth tone color? The black that they're being painted, is that an earth tone color? I mean, look, and I agree, midnight sky, that's an earth tone color, right? Like, where do we draw the line? So if you just say no neon, very simple, I think it appeases most people, and on the off chance that someone chooses to paint their house pink, that's their prerogative, it's their house. People can move, people can do what they want, this is America.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Duarte?
Florida's known for bright colors, especially in houses and buildings. My concern is, who's regulating the daily fines?
Ms. Duarte, can you announce your name one more time, please?
You just did. Jeannie Duarte.
Thank you.
Thank you. So putting liens on homesteads, and who's to say what the daily fines is? What, $1,000 a day? What is it going to really be? Who's maxing it out? And to think that you're going to extend that for 20 years, where, where's, this is kind of ludicrous. Anyways, I've seen gorgeous houses that are dark blue, navy blue, and dark gray, maybe regulate to trim, let people color what they want to color it, but maybe do some regulations on the trim, make it a little more cohesive. But I think this is kind of, kind of. But to, I think this is kind of, kind of ridiculous. And I've actually seen some orange and terracotta driveways. Who's regulating the driveways?
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Mindy Melendez. I'm here on the issue that has been ongoing since two thousand twenty-three, specifically on the home color and the LRV reflection. When we were building our addition, I called the city, asked them about the paint colors. They told me there were no permits needed, but it needed to be an earth tone. I looked on the internet, pulled this form up, which I was given to the last council, and showed that blue is an earth tone on here. That is when I painted my house ten doors down, the neighbor called on me. Since this first issue arose, I have attended meetings, seven, this is my eighth, navigating between planning board, beautification committee, and back to city council. And here we are again. This is a back and forth process that is not only exhausting, but is time confusing and inconsistent. This is more work than I did for my master's thesis process. When the matter was initially brought before the city council, the decision was made to lean towards lighter LRV. However, my home is darker. Nowhere on there did they go to the darker LRV. They went from eighty to sixty-five, did not look at twenty-five below. That's where mine would have fit in. I was clear from the beginning that my request was a darker LRV. The distinction was overlooked. The council at the time chose to look at the lighter, lighter, lighter LRV range in the full palette, particularly the questions. Furthermore, I want to reiterate that we do not live in an HOA committee, community. It is Palm Coast, homeowners are not required to pull permits to paint their homes. And many are unaware of such ordinance regarding the house color even exist. A quick drive-through Palm Coast, including HOA communities and non-HOA, you will see house colors such as mine, other house colors that are not in ordinance. But because my neighbor complains, I get a citation. The enforcement of this ordinance has also been inconsistent. In our case, I was told the determination of our color was non-compliance made simply by a drive-by observing, not by using a tool accurately to measure the LRV, which is the standard for such assessment. You cannot accurately determine the LRV color without a proper equipment. Yet, that didn't stop the violation being issued. In the past city council meeting, it was even stated that local paint suppliers of Palm Coast are aware of the colors. I went to Lowe's last night and asked two people sitting at the paint desk if they knew what the LRV was. They didn't even know anything existed. And that's where we bought our paint. Nobody said a word. Since this was overlooked on the sheet, and if you look, blue is not a forbearance color. It's not a non-allowed color. If you would have gone and looked at the darker colors, these would have gone. These would have been acceptable colors. Now, no, the orange is a, um, not allowed, but these darker colors would have been allowed. All of these, and my blue would have been allowed.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for all your work.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Denise Henry, P section. I'm totally against this color ordinance. One thing is, if you ever drive down, I've been lately more into the older parts of the city to pick up people, you have such dinginess and mundane, like the same colors are dingy and people aren't repainting their homes. And then you have the homes that have the irrigation from the wells that then puts orange spots on their houses. They don't do anything about that either. That, to me, looks more offensive than whether you have a dark colored house. I think the LRV needs to be darker, not lighter. I mean, some of the colors that are very light are just more like carnival to me, like cotton candy. Not, you know, when you have, like they mentioned olive. I think there's a house on Pine Grove that's close to olive. I think it looks very pretty and, I mean, very nice and fits in. I'm from Pennsylvania. I don't know one city near where I live that ever had a paint code. You know, I mean, people in Pennsylvania just don't care so much about their neighbors as they seem to do here. This is a newer city, so I guess that's why they feel it needs to be more like an HOA. But there are HOA places, so people could move there if they really want that regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Paps, C section. I didn't expect to weigh in on this today, but I did run across the issue when I moved to Palm Coast of painting my house. I painted it a blue. I had a neighbor tell me that my color was not going to be acceptable to the city. I did go before the code enforcement board and get it approved. But I do feel like when you're talking about educating the community, you're talking about doing it with code enforcement. It really should start when we move in. There is no excuse, you have a captive audience. You are our, you know, our water supply, everything. You could be sending out this information when people move into the, into the community at the, at the front and, and hurt off all of these issues if you just educate the people when they move in. I mean, if I'm getting my city, my water from the city, why isn't a letter going out saying, this is what's expected of you? This is what we do here. It's just as simple as that. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I've spoke about this subject in earlier, uh, city council meetings. And I feel that we're missing, I think, the bigger challenge we have in our code enforcement process. We're relying on our neighbors to enforce the codes that we have in place. And we're talking about all three of the issues that we're spending thousands of dollars discussing, whether it be chickens or colors or whatever. I don't know a neighbor of mine that would understand what is a good or bad paint color. I don't think a neighbor of mine would know if I was out painting my house to save money, that I needed to get that color approved. But we rely on our neighbors to be the enforcement action to support those codes that we spend a lot of time and money on. I was recently informed, and I haven't had a chance to confirm this with Barbara, but I believe she has six, five or six or seven inspectors that go out after a case is filed to do a verification. But if that person drives by a house that has a plumber truck in the driveway, they're not allowed to open a case or start a conversation knowingly know that that's a violation of our code? I haven't been able to confirm that with her because I haven't been able to catch up with it. But there is a broken understanding of the enforcement side of these codes. And relying on our neighbors, our city, our citizens next to us to be that trigger, like the lady with the blue home did everything she thought right and then was reported by her neighbor. Mayor, I totally support your understanding of view of we're putting our citizens in a point of enforcement that they are completely and utterly ill-prepared or even have an opinion. Like I was talking before, as long as my neighbor gives me eggs, I'm never going to turn them in. As long as my plumber buddy helps me out in the middle of the night, I'm never going to turn them in. So what again is the value of these? And I'll use this in closing. Every HOA I've ever lived in had their own enforcement group, monitor, inspector that drove around and took pictures. And they did not rely on the citizens. So I think you need to focus on that as where your goal should be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the DICE for any final comments. Any final comments? Ms. Cook, please call to vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
No.
The motion passes four to one.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to resolutions. City attorney?
Yes, we have a resolution for two thousand twenty-five Kings Crossing Technical Site Plan, Tier Three, Application five-nine-seven-eight.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Mr. Hanson is here to present this presentation to you. And I believe, Marcus, is this a quasi-judicial matter?
Yes. So as the city manager said, this is a quasi-judicial matter. So if you could take your parte, uh, sorry, I can't think. If you can disclose your ex parte communication, uh, that would be great. Thank you.
I have had none.
I received a voicemail requesting to talk, uh, but I did not get a chance to call back, so no communications.
Done.
I've spoken with the applicant's attorney. That communication will have no effect on my decision-making today.
All right, thank you very much.
I don't think I've seen any emails, Marcus. Don't, I, 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 what's the name of the applicant?
Go ahead, Michael.
You know, we have Douglas Burnett representing the applicant right now.
Say again, who?
Uh, Doug Burnett.
Doug Burnett, I don't, I don't, I don't recall that name or this name coming across my email.
Okay.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, Michael Hanson, Community Development. For the sake of brevity, on respect to you all this time, I'm going to try and make this as brief as possible. This project has been in-house multiple times over the last couple, a couple of years. It was previously approved, ultimately in error as a technical tier, uh, technical site plan tier two. To reestablish the development order, bringing it back and making sure that the council has approval on this one because it does exceed a hundred thousand square feet. The particular project is located on approximately thirty-eight acres off of Old Kings North, just south of Fanchay Lane. And we're looking at eight hundred thirty-eight units as the request with no proposed RV or boat parking storage. The total gross square footage of the facility would be approximately a hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-one square feet with two buildings, one with an office area and the other with a three-story structure for the storage units. This site is a mix of mixed-use conservation. There's some existing, uh, wetlands on the area. I'll get into the environmental just a bit, but, uh, commercial too is the zoning. For the particular use, that requires a special exception, which has already been granted by the planning board. It's currently valid as of right now. So as I mentioned, this project has been in-house a few different times over the last few years. This particular site gives you a little bit of the background. It's received a special exception that expired, uh, had received a technical site plan, a development order in error that has expired. The special exception's been reestablished. And as of last May, well, last month, the, uh, planning board here made a recommendation for approval for the technical site plan tier three approval. And, uh, uh, obviously, we're June seventeenth, so we're a couple of weeks after the tentative date that I had here. There's twenty conditions, uh, for the special exception that have been imposed by the planning board. And those special exceptions have been reviewed by staff, uh, based on the application to ensure that the applicant is meeting the special exception conditions. Uh, as I said, the overall site is approximately a hundred thirty, well, as far as the development, is a hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-one. There's significant wetlands on, on this site due to Big Mulberry Branch floodway. Portion of the sites, uh, in the Hundred Year Flood Plain, otherwise known as, well, typically Flood Zone A because the base flood elevations have been determined. The applicant's providing six hundred forty-two years yard, or cubic yards of compensatory storage due to the impacts within the flood plain. And this particular site shows you where the compensatory storage is, highlighted in that blue color on the southern portion, or well, the, what would be the northeast side, part of the site, but the bottom of this particular map. Now, because of Big Branch, uh, Big Mulberry Branch floodway, there is an impact to the wetland where they're making a crossing over a culverted bridge and thus kind of related to the name of Kings Crossing. The, uh, now, environmental impacts as far as the wetland have been minimized to the best of the applicant's ability, just relating to the actual crossing over to get to that other area of uplands where the larger the two buildings is located.
Can I ask, uh, so there's a creek here.
Yes, sir.
And it's hard to kind of distinguish where it exists on the site plan. Is it, this kind of highlighted in red?
Well, this highlighted area that's kind of a, a greenish tint right in the middle, and that's that Big Bullberry Branch floodway. So the, the red area that you see is some of the, uh, wetland impacts that are happening based on the proposed development to that, uh, wetland system that we have. So on, on this particular side, uh, staff has, uh, measured out based on the, uh, provided, uh, environmental reports. We're looking at approximately ten thousand and two hundred square feet of wetland impacts for the culverts and.
Is, is there any way you could pull up the satellite imagery of that site?
Uh, sure.
The appraiser's website?
Yeah, will do, sir.
The applicant, the applicant is here? It's pretty wooded, I don't know if.
You can, yeah.
Can you see it?
I was looking at it last night, you could see it, you can definitely see the creek.
I just want to see where it kind of exists on the site plan. I know in the.
Kind of goes right through the middle.
In the items that, yeah, I know, it, it, uh, you know, obviously, you can tell by the proposed development that there's not much actual developable land on this piece. I just want to make sure that we're mitigating that creek as much as possible. And I know that's the intent with the, the items, one through twenty. Most of them are related to floodplain and things like that. I just don't want to interrupt the flow of an existing creek.
I had it actually pulled up, you can probably see it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir. Yes, state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. For the record, Doug Burnett, St. John's Law Group, one oh-four Seagrove Main Street in St. Augustine, Florida. I do have a PowerPoint and I will address, uh, Councilmember Miller's, uh, because I also can orient the site plan and have it laid in as aerial. So when I get to my PowerPoint presentation, I think it'll help explain and answer some of your questions.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so he's going to be presenting.
All right, um, Mr. Mayor, this is the aerial that you requested. Uh, the property I have highlighted in a kind of a teal color. Well, now it's turn red that I clicked off that piece, but, what you're seeing is right in this area, this is kind of that wetland area with a big branch, uh, Mulberry Branch floodway. Their access is off here, they're coming in, in the dry area, they're making that crossing over this piece and then coming up in this area for that, uh, secondary building.
There's been an environmental impact study and all that's done on this?
Yes, sir, they, they submitted an environmental report.
And so as part of those impacts that were measured, it was ten thousand something square feet where there's going to be additional capacity added to this existing floodplain.
Yes.
To account for that.
So, sir, uh, as I mentioned, with the compensatory storage due to floodplain impact, based on the AE designation of floodplain, they have a base flood elevation determined through what was done for a clomer. And based on the impacts, they're needed to provide an additional six hundred and forty-two cubic yards of compensatory storage. So this particular slide on the slide is highlighted in kind of this blue area to the, the bottom port, center portion of the, the page to show you that six hundred forty-two extra cubic yards of compensatory storage they're providing due to the impacts of the floodway.
And that, that dotted line that's going down to Old Kings there, um, is that something that's going to go under the road for spillover?
Uh, it's existing.
Existing, okay.
As far as some of the surrounding area, uh, to Building A, the closest existing structure is a house of worship on adjacent property to the south, approximately a hundred feet, well, about ninety-five feet from, um, Building A. on adjacent property to the south, approximately 100 feet, well, about 95 feet from Building A. The site is heavily wooded and treed with vegetation that provides natural screening. This particular slide gives you kind of an architectural rendering as far as what the proposed building's looking at for Building A. This is the one-story office building. Then they have the little add-on on the corner here that kind of makes it look like storage units on the top, kind of for aesthetic purposes. Some more renderings of that Building A. Building B, on the northwest portion of the site in the uplands, which is in between the Big Mulberry Branch floodway and Interstate I-95, is the much larger of the buildings. This one is three stories in height. It's approximately 129,910 square feet. It has kind of an interesting architectural element, where people will be able to actually drive their vehicles through the rear portion of the building and actually drive all the way through, so it'll have a connected drive aisle internal of the building for customers to utilize. Additionally, this particular building is 450 feet from the nearest residentially zoned property off Fanchay Lane. And as I mentioned, there's significant vegetative and tree screening provided already with the existing Big Mulberry Branch. So, the actual view of the proposed structure would be likely minimized and broken up significantly due to the existing vegetation. Some of the architectural renderings that the applicant provided for Building B. This building is, I believe, approximately 42 feet in height. Or 47.25, sorry. They meet our site development requirements that staff has in the Land Development Code, providing 27 parking spaces, have two ADA spaces. As far as any kind of technical site plan application, we have to have them meet five criteria from our Land Development Code. Staff evaluated the application, is that it meets all five of the criteria. And this has been uniform throughout every iteration that this project has come in for previous emittals as well. The applications consistent with our Land Development Code comprehensive plan, selection of goals and policies from our LDC are available. And the proposed development's not anticipated to provide any kind of financial liability hardship for the city. And the applicant's plans meet all of our comprehensive plan requirements, our Land Development Code requirements, and they have to continue to meet the requirements for estate and any kind of environmental regulations as far as their impacts that they have. So, those have been evaluated based on this application. This particular application, because it's technical site plan, doesn't need any kind of neighborhood meeting. However, after, up until the planning board, and even after the planning board until now, staff has not received any kind of public participation or inquiries regarding the project. At the planning board meeting in May, the members of the planning board voted unanimously at a five to zero vote to find it in compliance with the special exception conditions, the Land Development Code, and the comprehensive plan, and they're offering the recommendation of approval to the City Council. The recommendation we have is the planning and land development board recommends that the, well, this would be, the City Council recommends, or planning board recommends, City Council finds it in compliance with the special exception conditions of approval of the Land Development Code, comprehensive plan, and recommends the approval of the technical site plan. The applicant is in attendance as he came up. He does have a brief PowerPoint, but I can pull up for him to go through.
Have you presented before, sir? Were you at the last meeting? Have you already presented? Okay. I wasn't here for that meeting.
No, no, no. He didn't present us. No.
Not in front of you at the planning board. It's the same presentation.
Yeah, this is his first time being before the City Council.
Okay.
Yes.
My only question is, why do you want to build on a swamp?
If I can go through the presentation, it may help answer that, because there's a, we're actually preserving a lot of the wetlands. The environmental impact to this site is extremely low and really probably reflective of the use. Councilmembers, general?
State your name for...
Yes, sir, will do. Doug Burnett, St. John's Law Group, 104 Seagrove Main Street. You know, when I come in here and I begin to present, and I look at the city seal and the date of incorporation, I'm reminded that I'm getting old, because I think my first case in Flagler County was in 98 when I passed the bar. I will tell you that with me today is our engineering team, Mr. Wilcox, also Noah Gerlick, who's done a lot of the work on this, our project engineers. Also with us is Todd Lucas and his team, who represent the ownership, developer, and rapid design build. So, any technical questions, they will be available related to it. I want to walk through some slides that talk about the site and perhaps help with Councilmember Miller's analysis of that issue of the crossing and the impact. And then also, just want to, I know you all know the orientation of where this is, but just show you generally, really hone in on the location. You can see Matanzas Woods to the north Palm Coast Parkway. You can see our site and where it's located on Old Kings. Taking a little closer look, this is the same image, in fact, that Mr. Hanson was using. And by the way, let me take one quick, brief moment to say thank you to city staff, because they've really gone through this thoroughly and analyzed our application and done a great job in providing you what I think is a very thorough staff report. You can see in this aerial, Mr. Miller, one thing that I believe that we're looking at when we see this is that dark line going from Old Kings Road kind of headed to the northwest. That dark line is basically standing water. And we're staying out of that particular area, and you can see where it goes on up. I think the tree line covers it in that area of the wetlands. It goes on up and crosses underneath I-95. So, in those other, if you go back and look at where that dark line goes back to Old Kings Road, those dotted lines are the piping that goes under existing, that's existing under Old Kings Road connecting to that water body. I'll skip through the future land use map and zoning map, because Mr. Hanson already covered that stuff. We are here for tier three approval. Staff report, just to hit some highlights of what went on and what went before the planning and zoning board. You know, site plan approval, it's currently got the proper zoning for it when you couple that with the special exception. And the key to that special exception is it's currently valid and it's in place. So, from that standpoint, this is a use that has previously been found appropriate here. Staff recommendation recommends approval, and then that was followed up by the planning and zoning board that unanimously 5-0 recommended approval. And then finally, staff represents the Planning and Zoning Regulation Board find that the project's in compliance. And there's some added detail in there. You know, obviously, you've got your Land Development Code requirements. Staff also on those issues finds that we comply with those requirements. Site plan, I'm going to turn the site plan here in a moment and show you a couple of things related to it, but this was the approved site plan that expired before with the site plan approval previously. And I'll show you the big change, and it's really only one change, and that is staff caught that the sidewalk didn't go back to the back building. And you're going to have customers using this if they walk from the office to the back building, so we needed to extend that sidewalk. And you can see the comparison here left to right. The sidewalk goes all the way up. So, really, that's the only kind of change was in here, and it's really your staff giving a thorough review. If we look at the site plan and we put some color to it, this is what's being preserved or left as open space, if you will. The site in total is about 36 acres of that. There's about 14 acres that are wetlands. Of the 14 acres, less than 0.3 acres. And really, if you look at the engineered drawings and what's specked on there, it's like a .22, but we're calling it a .03 for wetland impacts on the site. Very low, and where you see the activity on here, where you see the ponds that would be put in, and you see the two main buildings that would be built, those are all going on upland areas that are existing upland areas on the site. And then, it's not highlighted here, but down in the bottom right, if you will, of the green space in the south, if I orient myself, actually, it's northeast side of the site is that compensatory storage that Mike was pointing out earlier that's required so that we make sure we have more than what would normally be your pre-imposed. You know, from a stormwater standpoint, when we go to the St. John's River Water Management District, which that application is pending final approval, the Water Management District looks at your pre-imposed development stormwater discharge, and they require engineers to calculate the amount of stormwater where it flows before we develop and make our impacts for the impervious surface, roadways, buildings, and the like, to make sure that prior to development and post-development is equal. And so, that's been proven out. I believe your staff has reviewed some of that documentation. And obviously, we will have a Water Management District permit in hand before we were to turn dirt. From a approval standpoint of the site plan, we far exceed anything related to minimum building setbacks in the zoning category. You know, when you look at, okay, what's the minimum? Well, north and south, we could go down to 10 feet. And we're way up in the 510 feet. In fact, you look at what's the nearest home to here? It's that line in between my little bump-out table in the green space. You can see the platted lots. Part of those lots, interestingly enough, and when you look at the aerial, aren't built. There's no home on them, because you can see where that branch is actually going up through where those lots are located. I don't know if they'll get them permitted or not, but that's a pretty significant impact, as you can imagine. I don't know that the Water Management District would allow that to occur. And that's why when you look at the aerial and you see where houses have been built, they're on either side of where that tributary goes through those lots. Self-storage is an overview. I think this is an important one, and let me just back up before I start talking on this. I want to run through some bullet points about the self-storage industry that you may or may not have seen or may or may not be aware of, because it's really critical for this kind of use. It's a very minimum traffic generator. It's one of the lowest traffic generators there is. It has very low parking demand compared to any other commercial type of use. It's very low noise, because people don't do activities there. It's typically no nuisance to any neighbors, no impact to its neighbors, and I'll come back and talk about that for a moment. It's less impact on public facilities compared to the adwareum tax revenue that you receive. There's public facilities in place, which is in your staff report. There's also, it's a good plan for the environmental use of the land, and that's in your staff report. And we back that up with the environmental reports that we've provided in connection with our application. There are not endangered species on this site. We don't have bald eagle habitat on the site. We don't have endangered species. There was some indication that potentially there's one gopher-tortoise burrow on the site, but it's not active, and neither are the endangered snakes that typically go along with that gopher-tortoise burrow type of activity. The site, the portion of it that's wet, is wet, so that's not conducive for gophers in general. Going back up, though, and looking at traffic generation, I'll come back and show you a couple of slides on that. But your key on this is your adwareum tax revenue, and I think Mr. Hanson and I talked about the sum. One of the sites that's currently built within the county, their adwareum tax revenue off of that site is somewhere around $180,000 a year of positive revenue to the city. When you look at the calls for service, they're extremely low for self-storage, because unlike the person who's high-volume at a restaurant, where there's a lot of people there, always there, where you have higher calls for service or retail uses, where there's more trip generation, more people going to the location. With this kind of use, it's very low impact, and so it's very low calls for service, whether it's emergency services or first responders. So, it's a positive for you typically on an adwareum tax basis. It's very low impact, and I say this, it's interesting, because we're talking about internal self-storage. We're not talking about boat and RV storage. So, there is a big difference there when you think of the timing of when people are going in these facilities. And that's just as a practical matter, when do people go to their self-storage facilities? Typically, off-peak hours in a lot of weekend use rather than during the week. So, it's low traffic generation. And if you look at a site for where you put self-storage in our city or in our county, and you look at, okay, a lot of sites may be three, four, five acres for self-storage. And then we've got a site that's 36 acres that puts the self-storage in a place where it's not located in close proximity to any homes. It's not budding up. You have mass and scale, but it's, the main building, the main structure is far back. So, there's just so many positives about that, and I think that's why your staff report comes out as positive as it does related to, you know, what's in the area of the wetlands and traffic. I want to show you a quick trip generation comparison, because I think this really drives it home. Mini warehouse, self-storage, you're talking about .17 per thousand square feet. I know Fong Nguyen was in the room earlier. By the way, you've got a jewel in Mr. Nguyen. He did a lot of the transportation planning, long-range planning, going back maybe 15 years ago of what St. John's County would become. And perhaps that's why some of our roadways are as good as they are in St. John's County. But anyways, these numbers are ones taken from the LDTA ITE Trip Manual for FDOT. And you look at, for example, self-storage, I mean, excuse me, self-storage versus a gas station or service station, convenience store, you know, significantly more use, 600-plus times more. If you do a traffic comparison, though, of typical uses that you may see in this COM-2-type use, self-storage is significantly lower, you know, 100,000 square feet of self-storage versus the others. And if you say, okay, well, Doug, you've got, on our site plan, you have a place where you could have a restaurant up front, and maybe you have some office and retail in the back, and then what's that generate for trips on the same site? Because that's what you could be seeing come through for this site. And then you look at 2,900-plus daily trips for that similar-type use versus 160. And if you look at PMP hour, significantly less. So, it's just a very low trip generating use, which I think fits in very nicely in this location. And then if we take the site plan, and I think Councilmember Miller, this may be back to what you were trying to get to earlier, was, show me how this lays out in an aerial, so you can really digest it. And I think this shows where we're staying out of the area of that Big Mulberry Branch area that traverses the property, you know, our stormwater storage. The only thing that's on there is now in the top right, if you look closely, shaded in the green, is that compensatory storage pond. It's still outside of the Mulberry Branch, but that is where one pond is, and I apologize, that didn't come through for some reason. But you can see our ponds. You can see the two main buildings. You can see how isolated they are from anything else that's around. That natural foliage that's been, that's there, if you've driven by, a large portion of that is all going to remain in place, as Mr. Hanson can tell you about that from a design and engineering permitting process. And otherwise, I'll shut up and stop talking and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the DICE builder?
I have some questions, and I'll try to only ask you the ones that would be appropriate for you while you're there, rather than staff. The first question I had was, obviously, this is a franchise. Will the colors, the aesthetics fit in with our code? Will any adjustments need to be made to that?
We anticipate, and I'm going to look back at Todd Lucas, just so you can see the confirmation. We don't anticipate any variance, waiver, noncompliance on this site. So, to answer your quick question in a conclusive way of anything related to it, that we're going to comply with what the city's requirements are. And Mr. Lucas is confirming it.
Okay, great. And I saw that one of the conditions was that a cultural resource assessment would be required. Has that already happened? Because I know you all did the species assessment. You did the wetland assessment. Did you do the cultural resource assessment?
Yes.
I didn't see that in the backup materials.
And I'll just get Noah and Mr. Wilcox to confirm. There's nothing on here for archaeological concern.
Dana completed it?
Dana St. Clair.
Okay. That makes me feel okay. Okay, great.
I'll just for the record confirm that, yes, our consultant, Mr. Wilcox, project engineer, says that, yeah, that was completed.
Okay. And then, one of the conditions says it will require utility infrastructure improvements across slots one and two. The site will require utility agreements. I guess this could be for you or Mr. Hanson. Have those utility agreements already been completed?
To the best of my knowledge, ma'am, that they have. Those particular items were signed off by staff when this went through for the technical site plan during the, when it was thought to be a tier-two application, and was signed off by staff at that particular point a couple of years back.
Okay, thank you. The screening, you all noted some screening would go in on, well, both buildings, building A and B. What type of screening are we anticipating?
I think to a large extent, you've got so much natural vegetation that's mature growth. When you look at the aerial of what's there, you can barely even see the mulberry branch. And of course, we're not touching anything in mulberry branch. So when you look at what's there and around it, it's actually over, the trees are so large that they actually cover a good portion of the branch.
Sorry to interrupt you, but can we go back to the graphic that shows the actual buildings?
Shows what?
The buildings on the map.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, so I-
I'm sorry. Was I there right then? Let me go back.
No, Mr. Hanson just had it.
This?
No, not this one.
This one?
There we go, the one with the buildings, right. So I'm curious about, so, I'm sorry, directionally, I am challenged, I will be honest with you. The smaller building towards, I'm going to use the south end of the picture, thank you, southeast, I was half there, that's budding up against some residential. Is that the closest?
I think that's actually a church.
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
That's a church.
Ma'am, that's a church that it's about 95 feet from that existing house of worship on that adjacent property.
Frontier.
Okay, so 95 feet's not far. Are we, are you all anticipating any type of screening between your building and that church?
Other than what the code would require, we haven't spacked anything.
Yeah, so when the application goes through as far as screening landscape buffers, that gets reviewed by our landscape architect that we have. Staff has signed off on it. There's currently already in, within that area in between the properties, some existing tree vegetation that is largely meeting that. Otherwise, during the actual development of the project, the applicant will have to meet all the requirements for landscape buffer requirements that we have within Chapter 11 of our LDC.
Okay. And I'll get into the requirements with you, Mr. Hanson, in just a moment, because I have some concerns about using COM 2 rather than COM 3 or Industrial 1. But I don't want to keep Mr. Burnett up here any longer than he needs to be. So if you'll just give me one quick second. Mayor, if you want to go to anybody else, I want to look through my notes and make sure I don't have anything else for the applicant.
Okay. I really don't have any questions for him. Do you?
Just, just looking at it, when you look at the east side of Old Kings Road there, where you have the trees, you know, it, what's the status of that land? Is that, is that protected somehow from development, or is it, is it, same thing could happen on that side?
We'll have to get back to you in the future on that, sir. I don't have the answer at the moment.
I think you have the, you have the property appraisal side open, right?
Mr. Hanson, Hanson up on his computer.
Yeah, I'm just looking, what you have up on the screen's fine. And on the, on the west side of 95, does any of that water count, go across 95, or does it stop at 95?
Sir, sorry to interrupt. That particular property on the east side of Old Kings, I just pulled it up on the property praiser, it's actually owned by us, the City of Palm Coast.
Okay. So I'm just looking at the flow of, is there any flow of water, you know, Mulberry Creek and all that, across 95?
It's going the, if I'm-
I think it goes the other way, but I just wanted to make sure of that.
Sadly, I'm not really too keen on environmental planning, so I'm not sure the flow rate there, sir.
Carl, come up. Is that a weir right there on the east side, on the west side of 95? That's a weir? And this is, is the water flowing north on that end, in that particular area?
Water does flow under 95 into-
It does flow under 95.
And goes into the canal, comes out by kind of where the Long Creekage Reserve.
Coming, coming from Bird of Paradise Lake down.
So is that, where's the discharge from stormwater?
I just want to worry about it.
Yeah, me too.
Well, that's why they're doing this pond, too.
Yeah, I understand that, but-
It discharges into the saltwater canals, because it goes into Big, as part of Old Kings Road widening, we'll be expanding those culverts underneath Old Kings Road. And then it's going to, it continues east, and then it go, it'll come out in the canal by the old-
Palm Harbor.
Is where it discharges into the saltwater canals.
My concern is 95. Does that water go across 95 at that point into Mulberry?
It comes from the west side to the east side, correct.
It goes under.
There's culverts under 95.
Yes.
You got that weir there, and that, that second one down just south, the small, is that also going under?
I don't believe that one does. I think it's just the north one with the weirs.
The other side of that is part of the highland, so there would be nowhere for it to go if it does go under. That's the main thing that I was looking at, too, is the flow. It doesn't appear that they're making any changes to the existing basin, so-
Well, there's a road that goes north-south, or, yeah, north-south.
There's a road that goes around through the highlands, but not where it crosses Old Kings.
He needs to bring up the building graphic, show where the buildings are.
I don't believe they're crossing Mulberry Branch in their improvement.
You have a north-south blockage there to a degree with that road and the buildings. And that's why you have to put pond in, but-
Well, that's highland already, though, is what I'm saying. The water doesn't flow there based on the elevations.
Well, okay.
It all, like, essentially, it goes across through that northern culvert and comes around to this wetland basin as it exists right now. It's not going across that. At least, that's my understanding.
That's my understanding, too. Their development doesn't impact the flow of Big Mulberry Branch waterway.
So my concern, I think what we're all kind of inquiring about here is the removal of trees, the removal of vegetation, which we know helps with flood mitigation, and putting down very large buildings in their place. What effect is that going to have in an area where Old Kings already has flooding issues in some spots? So are we assured that we're not, we're not exacerbating issues here?
May I approach?
Please.
For the record, my name is Dan Wilcox. I'm the engineer of record on this one. I've been doing this since 1995, and the questions you have are absolutely valid. These have all been addressed by the assurance that our pre-development rates of runoff are not being exceeded in our post-development rate runoff by the stormwater system we have proposed and constructed on, to be constructed on-site. In addition to that, we took the additional assurance of having a stormwater model literally implemented into the citywide stormwater model that they have for the advanced interconnected pond routing model they use in the city. We integrated this design in its postdeveloped state into the citywide model and literally found there was no backwater rise. We did that to assure the residents that there would be no problems. And it was at the request of city staff that we did that. It was time-consuming, weeks of rerunning the stormwater model. We ourselves could not do it in-house. I don't have that computer strength to run that type of stuff. It takes a server-based computer strength. And in doing so, our engineer on that component came back with a finalized decision that the development of this process, of this project will not create problems for the, either upstream or downstream of the residents along Mulberry Creek, the Mulberry Branch. The purpose was to verify that we weren't causing upstream problem, upstream issues more so than downstream. But in the analysis, we also verified there were not going to be any problems downstream either. The big concern was the culverts crossing, were they going to be adequate in size to address the flow that's occurring? We didn't want to create any problem, like you said, exacerbate any issues. So we've gone through and looked at that from both those perspectives, increased and added in both the node for our site and the reaches necessary, those are technical terms in the stormwater modeling world, to facilitate the model and make sure that it is, in fact, not problematic for the city system.
So thank you for that. And that leads to my next question. This is for Carl. As far as the culverts that are there, all of the infrastructure that we have, are we anticipating having to upgrade anything because of this type of development in this area?
No, this, like, this development won't require any upgrading because the pre and post are the same or less. So there's no added stormwater.
Okay.
This last hurricane, Carl, did we have in that area, in that general area, west of 95, Birchview, Birchfield, Birchwood, or even those ones to the south that aren't identified, the streets aren't identified? Do we have any flooding in that area?
I believe the flooding we have in this area is north of here. It's not this particular-
I think it is.
Yes.
It's around Burbank mostly, and then the opposite side.
Close to your neighborhood, right? You're right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the DIAS?
Not on this issue, but I had one other question with regard, for the applicant. On one of the, in some of the backup documents, there is reference to a turn lane entrance. Will you all be putting in a turn lane?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
When we reviewed the project for, actually, we didn't need one from a, from an IT perspective. It's pretty minimal, de minimis. But to be sure that we didn't perpetuate the ongoing problems that we know exist along this roadway in this area, we provided the right turn in to get traffic out of the way so we remove that conflict. And those people don't honk their horns.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to follow up with that. I know it's not a huge trip impact, so, you know, potentially, that's why this isn't considered or not. Or maybe you did, but found it to be not necessary. So you have frontier right south of there. So you have people at that stop sign always trying to get out. It's a two-lane road. As you're coming north on Old Kings to turn left into this property, this new proposed property, because there's only two lanes, there's no turn lanes for left turns on Old Kings, I anticipate there may be, you know, two or three or four cars being backed up while they're waiting for an opportunity to turn left, which would then be blocking the frontier intersection as well. So do you guys do any modeling in terms of that intersection?
We looked at that. We didn't find, we don't find a degradation or a problem there for that conflict. That was really, honestly, it was, the number of vehicles we have coming in and out here are really limited.
Yeah, yeah, and we've seen this before with other presentations.
I agree with you 100%. I'm not trying to put the idea that we're nothing onto the city's roadways, because it is, every, it's a cumulative effect. Every little road out there adds on, and we did look at that, and it is not going to cause a backup or create a conflict.
Yeah. I think, you know, just in terms of Old Kings, the number-one effect is left-hand turns because there's only two lanes and there's no left-hand turn. So that's, that's a, it's an effect that exists all the way down that corridor. You know, we have office buildings down there, different clubs that exist there. So anybody trying to take a left off of that experiences those same problems.
And some of that might be adjusted or fixed whenever we move forward with the Old Kings widening phase two.
Yeah, no, I would hope so.
Because I think it goes all the way up to Frontier, and Carl's giving me a thumbs up, so yes. And that design contract and grant agreement should be on your schedule here this summer.
I was actually going to speak to that effect also. We do have, and we have looked at those plans to verify what's going on. The attempt on our part was to make sure that our design will be able to blend and meld with what is being proposed. We know it's pending. It's right there. It's coming forward. It's a matter of finalizing all the elements, and we didn't want to create a situation where we would be not cohesive and cooperative with that proposed plan. So that's, one of the things we did was look at that also. It's hard to see in the future what you got, but this is so close where we are, it was easy to see.
Any further questions from the DIAS?
I have a couple of questions just for staff. Thank you, both. I appreciate the information.
One last, you got hog trappers on staff?
Pardon?
You have hog trappers on staff?
No.
You're going to need them.
We do, we do have hog trappers, but-
You're going to need them.
That's a whole other discussion. We can go when you want to, call me. It's not fun.
For staff, I saw the site development requirements for COM 2. But the fact is, we're not, so PLDRB already approved this, right? We're not approving the land use for a storage facility. We're just approving now, at this point, the site plan.
That's absolutely correct, ma'am.
So I want to know that the site development requirements that would be in place for COM 3 or Industrial 1 are met by this site. And the reason for that is, per our code, a storage facility doesn't need a special exception. It's intended, storage facilities are intended in COM 3 and Industrial 1. So pursuant to their site development, are they, would they meet the requirements if this were COM 3 and Industrial 1?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe that's correct because the site overall is 36 acres. In COM 3 and Industrial 1, I think have a minimum size requirement, and I can, I can pull it up. I believe it's 20,000 square feet. But as far as setbacks go, the nearest structure as far as the property to that house of worship is 95 feet. And setback-wise, they only need to meet, well, 10 feet under the COM 2, I believe it's, I'll double-check, I think.
Yeah, I'm concerned about setback for Industrial 1 largely.
Yeah, Industrial 1 and COM 3, the internal side and rear setbacks only 10 feet, so-
Okay.
They're significantly meeting that. And they're, they're well within building height limitations as well, so.
Okay, thank you for that. I have nothing, I have no other questions, mayor.
Any further questions? Can we get a, oh, I'm sorry, can we get a motion to approve? Or a motion? We need a motion, right, Marcus?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Any further discussion from the DIAS? We'll open this to public comment. Anyone have any public comment concerning this resolution? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the DIAS. Any closing comments? Ms. Cook called a vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
No.
The motion passes four to one.
Okay, we're moving on to J, Resolution Number Nine.
City councilmembers, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Have a good day. City attorney?
Resolution, we have another 2025 resolution approving a master service agreement with Plant &amp; Morgan LLC for entity-wide risk assessment consultant services.
Mayor, we are ready for your signature for the previous item, since it did pass whenever you're ready. And just to introduce this item, we have before you Mr. Willsey. He is our risk administrator, and he will be managing, project managing this strategic action plan priority for us for the risk and efficiency assessment. And that is included in your agenda packet is also an overview. Tim, would you like to go through that overview? We just want to make sure we have very clear guidance on what the expectation is that you're looking for out of this assessment so that we can work with the consultant accordingly. Go ahead, Tim.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tim Willsey, Risk and Safety. And as included in your packet, I don't have a presentation, as I know I stand between you and lunch, and that is important. But nonetheless, this was an item that was from September council meeting last year. So per direction of council, the City of Palm Coast will be conducting an entity-wide risk assessment analysis. As defined in the scope of services of this RFP, they will assess current capabilities and develop matrix to properly assess the risk, interview key stakeholders, identify strategic, operational, financial, and compliance risk, receive guidance on prioritizing risks and design a mitigation strategy that aligns with the city objectives, and receive guidance on measures that can create operational efficiencies for city departments. This RFP went out. They had several respondents, and this bid was awarded to an organization, Plant Moran. Their proposal noted that the following items were included. Identify and prioritize the top relevant risk to the city based on the initial entity-wide assessment. Develop the matrix we previously spoke about. Collaborate with management to design mitigation strategies and develop a practical risk reduction plan aligned with your objectives, and provide guidance and actionable recommendations to strengthen the risk mitigation and enhance operational efficiencies for city departments. The key areas to be addressed include operational, strategic, financial, and compliance. This was slated to ensue for the FY '26 budget. I did reach out to the vendor and ask if we could move that up. They said they are, once everything's in place, this approval, and then they get the contracts in order, they said yes. And they said, I would expect this to take about four to six weeks. So I would say two to three weeks from this meeting, we would probably start the project, and then hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, complete this.
So we are using city manager contingency to advance this project before the fiscal year?
Is this just a one-year contract?
This is for the project. It's a project contract. It's not a term. So the fee for this is $59,925.[1799.61] So the fee for this is $59,925, was their bid that they won with.
Anything from the DIAS?
I wasn't here, Chris.
No? Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Anything else from the DIAS? Open up the public comment.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I think the question you had up front was, or maybe the, our active city manager, was specific guidance on what we wanted to see.
We created an overview for you in your agenda packet. We just want to reaffirm that scope.
Yeah, so that's, I just want to make sure everybody's good with that, with that scope.
Any questions on the scope? I ask my question to you, sir, would be, do you think this is gonna help the city?
Absolutely. It could potentially have a very positive impact in identifying, you know, complacent issues and things like that. But I think that from an outside perspective, you have a firm that has experience in this, and they're gonna give their expertise in developing a matrix that can be used for years to come. It's not just something that's gonna be a one and done.
Has, is there anyone on staff that's been through, like, I've got, I can't even remember the name of the certifications, but as far as risk assessment certifications, we have no one that can fulfill that role in the operational side of the city?
I think the, the services that this firm is gonna provide is unique in nature, and I'm not aware of anyone on staff that can fulfill that.
Not only that, but you're also kind of asking the fox to guard the hen house there.
Right.
Yeah, you do need outside eyes. But, well, the structure's kind of different than, you know, what I'm accustomed to, because you have higher echelons that come in and, you know. I got to go to Hawaii for that training, by the way.
Sign me up.
My, my, sorry, go ahead, council.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, we can all read it, but for, for, for our residents, you know, you know, proactive risk identification and management, operational efficiencies, that key term there, I think we're all looking for that and seeing where we can save money and providing a comprehensive evaluation of all potential risks that could impact the organization. But enable city leaders to assess, evaluate, and manage emerging risks effectively and efficiently. So I think, what did we used to call that? Command inspection programs, people come in from the outside and look in the army. So I think, I think this is in line with what we've been discussing, especially with, you know, our, the resolution we passed with Doge and other areas as well.
Yeah, I want to make sure that this isn't a, this should be a subjectively, we need to look at our staff when formalizing this. In other words, I don't want this identification framework, et cetera, to be the same thing that every other city will receive. It needs to be specialized after looking at our organization. Is that the understanding? In other words, that they're not just coming in here and selling us the same book they sell to 10 other cities, but they're coming in, they're looking at our organization, our structure, and then they're creating a framework and a risk analysis based off that specifically.
Per my initial communications with them, it sounds like they're gonna have individual meetings with each department. So they're gonna learn their structure, they're gonna learn our organization in particular before they offer any recommendations.
Okay.
So it won't be a canned item.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Canned, that's the term I was looking for, thank you.
Down at the operational, operational level of the departments determine, you know, needed improvements to facilitate greater outcomes. Okay. And that was the last from the DIAS. We opened up the public comment. Anyone have any public comment concerning this resolution?
Where's Mr. McDowell?
On vacation. Okay, we'll bring it back to the, to the DIAS. Any closing comments? No closing comments. Ms. Cook, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on.
Thank you, council.
The Resolution J 10, Resolution approving additional applicants for the cultural art grant for FY '24-25.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Deborah Morgan. I am the Destination Development and Community Engagement Manager with the County Tourism Development Office, and I am the liaison to the Flagler County Cultural Council. We have had an unfortunate turn of events. Nancy Crouch, the Chair of the Council, has had some flight delays trying to get home from Chicago last night. So she's somewhere in the air between Chicago and here as we speak. And unfortunately, Julia Trillo, who was going to present on her behalf, had an appointment that she needed to leave for at noon. So that leaves me as next in line. I am prepared to make this presentation on their behalf, or if the council would prefer to move this item to the next meeting for the FC3 representatives, that certainly would be your decision. So let me know how you would like to proceed, please.
Anything from the DIAS? Would you guys like to delay this or move on with it?
I'd move forward.
Move forward.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
You would like to move forward, okay. Please be gentle, because I wasn't prepared to present today.
You're gonna do great.
On behalf of the Cultural Council, we are truly grateful for the opportunity that the City of Palm Coast has given to us to manage this grant program on their behalf. We're super excited from the beginning of the application process and what we've already completed. We've certainly made some mistakes. We've certainly learned some lessons, and we are taking all of that into the next round. So as a, as a brief reminder on your screen, that's our list of our Board of Directors. We do have Mr. Peter Johnson here today. He is on the Board of Directors, and he did sit on the review panel for these grants as well. And then you see all of our appointees and the representation that we have from all of the cities. Just as a review of our strategic plan, advocacy, foster collaboration and support, and certainly this, this program fits in with that support element of our strategic plan. And I did want to review for you from the last meeting, the scoring criteria. And I'll just leave it up there for a moment, so you guys can review. If you have any questions, if not, I'll move on to the next slide. Just give them a moment to review it quick. We're good? Okay, we'll do the next slide, and that's more scoring criteria. Maximum possible score is 105. They need a minimum qualifying score of 80 to be recommended to the council here. And our grant recommendations. So on the left side of the screen, I've recapped the round one. We had 13 applications. 11 were recommended to this council for funding. One was not. One application was withdrawn. The total awards from the first round was $89,094. So if you look at the top of the right, total allocation from the city was $100,000. If we take away the first round awards of $89,094, that leaves an availability of $10,906 for round two. Round two, we received four applications. Two have been recommended for funding today. Two applications were withdrawn, and the total funding request for today's $10,906. And how we broke that down, as you can see, the Boys and Girls Club of Volusia County, they requested $10,000. Because there's not enough to fund both of these requests, we took a ratio 91.96% of the available funding, and we're recommending an award of $9,196 for the Boys and Girls Club of Volusia and Flagler. And for the Flagler County Historical Society, they requested funding of $1,860. And again, with that 91.96% ratio, the recommended award is $1,710. The Palm Coast Historical Society withdrew their application after scoring, so you will see their score there, but the funding request is zero because of the withdrawal. It's my understanding that they have changed the date of their event to October, which is great news, because they'll be eligible again for the fiscal year '26 grant cycle. So that's, that's great. And then the George Washington Carver Foundation withdrew their application because they will not be holding their events within City of Palm Coast limits. So next, that's just a review that shows you the Boys and Girls Club of Volusia in Flagler County and a review of their program. And I believe that you have the applications in your backup on the agenda. So their average score was 100.8. Again, the funding request was slightly reduced due to available funds. Flagler County Historical Society, same thing. Average panel score 103. Funding request, again, reduced from $1,860. Palm Coast Historical Society with the score that they received, but their application has been withdrawn. And George Washington Carver, application withdrawn. So that is the end of what I have for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything from the DIAS?
Okay. Thank you for that. I have some questions with regards to the Palm Coast Historical Society. Can you all give me some background on the, I guess, the reasoning for the score itself?
The reason for the score?
Yes, ma'am.
So we had a panel of four people that scored. And, and as we went through the process in the first round as well as the second round, you know, everybody has a different niche of, you know, what they're looking for. What I'm looking for might not be what somebody else is looking for. So it's nice to have that balance of four different perspectives coming in there. In summary, you know, some of us scored some events higher, some scored lower. You know, there's, I'm sorry that I don't have that in front of me, all of the scoring, but there are four different people that are scoring under approximately eight to 10 different criteria, and then it's all culminated to make that final score. So it's, it's just, you know, it's, it's, we score ahead of the, when we review with the applicant. And then after reviewing the applicant, the reviewers have an opportunity to go in and change those scores, you know, once we have additional information. Now, I don't know, I can't tell you right now whether or not any of those scores were changed after the reviews, but that opportunity certainly at least exists for the applicant to come in. And if, maybe they're, sometimes the applicant, especially this time being the first time and it's new, you know, maybe they didn't understand something. So it's a great opportunity for them to really get to expand a little bit more on what their event is, provide additional information. It gives the reviewers a chance to say, hey, I didn't see something in your application. So now they have an opportunity to come forth and say, oh, because, and oh, that's great. You know, I'm glad we asked you about that, because we didn't know previously. So, so there is a great opportunity for them to, to be able to substantiate their applications. Go ahead, Peter.
I could ask some more pointed questions for you. So one of the big issues was just the criteria that was included in it. So like, for example, we asked for a letter of support. We received no letter of support from them. Every other organization put in not just one, but numerous letters of support. Another issue that we had was simply that there was a little bit of miscommunication. We had offered help for the applicants at any point of the process. They could have called Julie and literally had their hand held for the application process. I'll be candid, Palm Coast Historical Society did not apply the first go-around. They waited till the second application process, and it was put in seemingly rushed. And some of the issues that we faced were some of the criteria. So like, Ms. Papst thought that they weren't able to fundraise for the event. That wasn't accurate. They weren't able to use the money that we were giving them as a fundraiser for their organization, but they could use it as a fundraising event. And quite frankly, just the application in its entirety, in order to preserve the integrity of the entire scoring system, had to be graded accordingly. If you want me to get into the specific grades, I'd be happy to. I gave them an 81, which was passing. Some of the other people, I believe, gave them in the 80s. There was one low score that threw it. I think everyone scored it pretty accurately for what was presented.
So I appreciate that. No, I looked at all the applications. I listened to the meeting where the applicants came in and questions were posed. And I'll be honest, I was a little put off by the tone that was taken with the Palm Coast Historical Society. I greatly, and I'm obviously the liaison for the City of Palm Coast with FC3, and I'm very grateful for everything that the organization does. To me, I look at, it's Founder's Day. It's, it's an important event. And I don't know that the proper amount of grace was maybe given to this, I'll be quite honest.
Sure.
So I just have a little bit of concern.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pontieri. When you refer to grace, do you mean that when a letter was falsely accusatory of us making accusations that was presented to you guys?
I think both ways.
I understand. So from personal, from the review board, I think we gave an exemplary amount of grace for the conditions that we were placed under.
Yeah, no, what I was, what I was leading up to say was, I believe that there was an amount of starting on the wrong foot for both parties here.
Sure.
So I would hope that moving forward, there's an ability to kind of start fresh. And let's focus on how important the Palm Coast Historical Society is for the community. Because I believe that more grace could be given both ways here.
I agree. I just want to specify though, too, that like, some of the requests were just not reasonable. As in $6,000 for coloring books for a three-hour event.
Well, I don't want to, listen, I don't want to get into the granular of that, Peter.
But as the review board, we have to. So that's, that's where our basis comes off of, is we have to, in order for the integrity of this process to maintain, we have to abide by the qualifications that everyone puts in as a whole. Because if we show leniency for one, there was other review boards that also would expect leniency, and we are setting a precedence for this.
But, but to say there were $6,000 for coloring books is also not an accurate depiction.
Well, when it's explained to you like that, that's the only depiction that we have.
Teresa, to your point, I respect your point. And I hear you loud and clear. And we actually were somewhat disappointed that that application was withdrawn, because there is the opportunity that we have here today to bring it to the council, and you are, of course, the final decision makers. So we were, we were disappointed, you know, that, that opportunity wasn't given to you to just make that decision based on the factors that you're saying. On the other side of the coin, she now has another bite at the apple, because the date has changed for that event. So we look forward to working more closely with her and guiding her through that process to make it a more robust application for the next round.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate you saying that, because that was kind of my point in saying, look, we now have an opportunity to make this right, and let's, let's get there. I am also disappointed to see the application withdrawn, I'll be honest, because I know that we're the final say, and I, we can't grant, we can't make an adjustment on an application that doesn't exist. So I would just ask again, that you all kind of, let's start fresh. Let's recognize the importance of FC3. Let's recognize the importance of the Palm Coast Historical Society, and I hope to be awarding a grant to Ms. Papst and the Historical Society in the future.
We do as well. As the history liaison, we look for nothing more than to do those things, so we want to.
Who were the, who were the four graders? Yourself, Mr. Johnson?
Myself, Deborah, Danielle Anderson, and Nancy Crouch.
And Nancy Crouch?
Yes.
And who was the other one?
That was it. That was the four. Me, Danielle, Deborah, and Nancy. And then Julia was the review board organizer, so she sat as the panel expert, but didn't grade.
Because Julia had direct contact with each of the applicants. She purposely recused herself from reviewing, because she was personal with them to guide them through that process.
If, if the application wasn't withdrawn, I don't think anyone would have had a problem with you guys making the determination. It's just with the integrity of the scoring system. We can't waiver on that, because this is tax dollars.
How much experience do you have in grant writing, Mr. Johnson?
About as much experience as you do in public service, sir.
Excuse me? Been a public servant my whole adult life.
So have I.
Okay. This is, this is the issue I see. When is this contract done, city manager, with FC3?
It's on a yearly basis to.
And it's getting ready to expire in September?
Well, it's, it's upon a review of budgeting funds for the next round of grants. So if city council wanted to take a different approach, we would need to have that conversation as we start navigating the budget.
Okay, so, because me personally, I don't think, I'm sure the intent was great here, but some of the things I've heard, and no, no other city has any skin in the game.
That's not true. Flagler County contributes $50,000.
Mr. Johnson can, you don't have the floor right now. The mayor has the floor.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No worries.
I just wanted to clarify.
Municipalities have skin in the game like we do. It's $100,000, right? You guys did $100,000?
That's true, but that's also why, so I had brought this up previously. That's also why the events have to be held in the city right now.
I get that, too. I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Yeah, so I mean, I would like us, I would like to see us open it up to the county, but also get skin in the game from the other municipalities. So I, I think where you're leading is that we need to look, relook at this, and I agree with you. I think we need to look at the entire setup here and make it better.
Yeah, because one of the, one of the comments I got was, and Ms. Papst can probably explain it, and I'm trying to be as kind as I can. and Ms. Paps can probably explain it, and I'm trying to be as kind as I can, but when you have someone sandbag you, or, you know, completely be disrespectful to you, and I have an email from someone that's associated with one of these people of those four, just blowing me up, just blowing me up because I won't give them an interview. And that's completely at my discretion who I give interviews to. But the insulting tone of that email, and knowing the association with one of these people on this four that was reviewing, I have a serious problem. Because the Palm Coast Historic Society is our city's historic society. T D C funds the staff at the Historic Society in the county. Most of the money that goes into T D C is coming from us within our city. We are this county. I hate to tell people that, but Palm Coast is the county. We're the piggy bank for the county. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sign on and be party to a core organization in our city that's there designated to preserve the history of our city to be treated like a redheaded stepchild when it comes to funds that are coming primarily from our city, our city coffers, our taxpayers. And I have a serious problem with that. So, I will not, I will not be supporting, right now as it stands, supporting renewal of that contract. And I'm sure all these organizations have great things, they do great things. But I'm not, I don't see me allowing other people to pick winners and losers. We can pick winners and losers in our city, you know, outside agencies. There's, there needs to be a separation between that T D C and F C three. And also, there's a political organization involved in there, too, because a lot of those members are part of political organizations. So, those are some of the issues I have with this. I don't know about, did the rest of the council listen to that audio from the F C three meeting?
I did listen to the audio, so I'm pretty well aware of it, and I'm very familiar with F C three. F C three is still in its beginning stages. And I think I would agree with Vice Mayor that we probably need to continue to look at it to make sure it's the most effective organization it can be. But there are, there are over fifty of these cultural organizations, volunteer organizations in the county and city, and F C three is trying to be supportive of the process. And I think, I think what you're talking about really is the process. Do we have it correct right now? And it's, as I say, it's still a relatively junior organization. I was involved with it, no doubt about it, but I'm no longer involved now that I'm over here on the council. But I do think we need to take a look at it again. These are all valid points you're making, Mayor. I'm not saying or not, but I think we need to look at it and see where we should go, if there are ways to improve the situation or not.
Is that, is the F C three a nonprofit, or is it a, is it a nonprofit organization?
It is, sir.
Self-serving nonprofit organization.
Yes, sir.
And I think that any, when it comes to grants from this city, we, as a council, should be appointing the people that are gonna be picking the winners and losers, not just people that, like, requiring, like, you're not gonna be able to apply for a grant. This is one thing I heard. You're not gonna be able to apply for a grant if you're not a member of F C three. And I think you may have swatched that.
That's incorrect.
At one time. So, I don't think anybody should have to be a member of an organization to benefit from money that's coming from the city.
Yes, we took that criteria out based on those comments.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a criteria for this.
It's been, based on your previous comments going into this several months ago, you had said that. So, that criteria was removed before we ever opened the application up.
So, I just, I just, I want to do the right thing, and I want to support the arts, especially history. I'm, I'm a history guy, but I don't want people, you know, self-serving and ridiculing people and, and sandbagging an organization that's dedicated to preserving art history here in the community. That's just my, my take on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel.
Yeah, I just got a quick question.
Sure.
So, the criteria that was used for this round of applicants was the same one we used before.
And the second.
So, there's no change?
Not at all. So, the only change that has been is we had to adjust the modification of the percentage that the people received because we had less funds. So, obviously, if people, someone requested.
With the evaluation criteria.
The evaluation criteria did not change. The only thing that changed was the percentage of the money that could be allocated out.
Okay. So, based on the established criteria for all applicants, is it your assessment that, you know, it's been fair, the criteria is fair and consistent across the board?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, I think, I think as we look at the process, we look at the criteria going forward.
And, and, Mr. Gambaro, if I.
The Palm Coast Historical Society was sandbagged.
If I may, sir.
One, one score was like sixty or so. That brought down the total score completely by one individual. All the others were in line. I'm sure, Peter, Peter, what did you score to Palm Coast?
I gave them an eighty-one. So, the eighty-one, so they were passing, and my, that was my score.
I'm a sixty.
Sixty-seven.
Who was that?
Danielle Anderson. And if I could just add one other thing to Mr. Gambaro's comment real quick. The, the city of Palm Coast is, is, not to discredit you guys, but is getting a bargain. We came five thousand dollars out of pocket to fund the submittable program for this. And you guys gave us the contract as to what the stipulations were. So, we're trying to abide by the stipulations that the city of Palm Coast gave us. I just want to throw that out there.
May I step in here? Because I was on council when we discussed this with F C three, and we had asked you all to manage the grants for us, essentially. And you asked for an admin fee, and we told you no. So, it's completely voluntary. So, that's why I started my, what I was saying, my comment with, thank you for doing this. I want to see it done in a more professional way, based on the tone of that meeting that I perceived. Now, I wasn't there, so it's just me listening, but I will tell you, from listening, there seemed to be a very, a marked difference in the tone with the other applicants that were heard in that audio versus the Palm Coast Historical Society. And I, I do think that the process is probably a little flawed, being that one score can bring down other qualifying scores so much. So, that's a flaw in the process. I wouldn't use the term "sandbagged" because, to me, that's a process flaw. If one score can, can, can bring down three other scores, there's something wrong with that process. Okay, so maybe there need to be four people on the scoring board, and you drop the lowest, and you drop the highest, and then that's, that's done often. Now, again, that's just, you know, throwing out one, one suggestion. But from, from my perspective, I would be saying we, as councils, should reconsider the allocations if the application had not been pulled. So, for future reference, Ms. Paps, don't pull your application because we can't do anything now up here to adjust the grant amounts. We're kind of stuck either to approve or deny all of them, and I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I don't think that that's prudent either. So, yes, we, as councils, asked F C three to take this on. I believe Parks and Rec was doing it before. So, we can obviously relook at that process, but I think this is just a honing of a process.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Got a second? Any further discussion? We'll open up the public comment. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Teresa Paps, and I'm with the Palm Coast Historical Society. And I just want to clarify a few things. The reason I withdrew our grant proposal was because we did not want any favoritism that we saw going on currently with the, with the way the grants were being given out. And when I go through this, I'll explain to you how that worked. But we applied for the second round of grants for the, I did for the Palm Coast Historical Society. I attended the grant review meeting with F C three on the proposal. The Flagler County Historical Society and the Boys and Girls Club were also there at that meeting. Both of their proposal reviews received glowing praise and scores of over a hundred percent. During our review, I was, I explained that this was my first time writing a grant, and I asked for grace at that meeting. Instead, I got questions from the committee, and I felt like I was being reprimanded for our marketing costs and the event itself that we were having. A committee member even said the twenty-fifth Founder's Day celebration for the museum didn't really warrant a grant since it was already open to the public. Our score was a seventy-four, even though, and I don't know where they're coming up with seventy-something now because it was actually seventy-four, that, and we had met all the criteria. I left the meeting disappointed, but rallied the next day and requested a copy of the perfect score proposals to understand how to improve. I also pulled our proposal since it didn't make the eighty percent needed. I was in shock and disbelief after I discovered reviewing those grants. Both had discrepancies in them, but one had the most egregious errors in it was the Flagler County Historical Society. Due to the time restraints, I'm giving you a very brief on the errors. And Lauren Johnson has a list of the errors that were on that, and she also has the audio that I suggest you all listen to. I was in shock and disbelief over what I discovered. So, four major requirements were not met in the proposal from the Flagler County Historical Society. I just heard Peter Johnson say I didn't give letters of recommendation. We did give letters. But the Palm Coast Historical Society, however, did not. They also did not meet several of the criterias on, they're supposed to furnish a full bank statement. They didn't furnish that. They furnished a partial bank statement. They're, they asked for a grant request of sixty-seven hundred dollars, and, but their budget was only for sixty-two. They referenced having four hundred participants in one area and eight hundred in another. They said they were having a boat tour, two in one location and four in another. That said the boats held a hundred people. No dates or details were given for the bus or the water tours. It became very clear that the scores were awarded on who was asking for them, not what was being presented. And it was, it was just very blatant favoritism, I felt like. Just one example of the biased behavior was a review that where I was called out for my letters of support not being for our event. Ironically, Flagler County Historical Society didn't even issue any letters of support. F C three committee, including a T D C employee, displayed lack of integrity and trust for their scoring process. I'm asking the City Council to pull the program back in-house and establish professional vetted groups, a group of citizens, to oversee this process moving forward so that we do not have these problems.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Bring it back to us. Any closing comments?
I have just a general discussion. For F C three, did F C three exist prior to this grant process? Or does, does it exist only to serve this purpose?
It was created before, right?
So, there's other duties that F C three administers or services provided?
So, in 2019, the Tourism Development Office did a strategic plan, and we brought all the stakeholders together, and they overwhelmingly said that they would like to see a cultural council in this community. So, I've been with the tourism office since 2012. So, this is the third resurrection of trying to bring a cultural council up to speed here in the community to bring together all of these arts and culture. So, through that process, as a result of the strategic plan, I started researching how to go about doing that, and it looks like it's a local arts agency. So, what does a local arts agency look like? Well, it looks like your community. So, we chose to say our local arts agency is going to be arts culture, and we want to include history because we are a small community. So, it made sense to bundle all of that together. So, how do we get to be a local arts agency? We bring all these stakeholders together, and this is right around the time of COVID. So, we were doing a lot of this by Zoom, and all of our arts and culture people came on, and they said, yes, we want an arts council. If the tourism office is gonna back us up on that, we are, we're into it. Fantastic, let's get everybody, and you were there, Mr. Sullivan. Let's get everybody in the office finally, and let's discuss how we're gonna move forward. So, we had about thirty people show up to that. This is back in twenty twenty, twenty-one, somewhere around there. And everybody was very enthusiastic. They wanted to do this. Okay, show of hands, who wants to be the organizing board? So, we have five people raise their hands at that time. Yes, we'll be the organizing board. They organized, they incorporated. We worked very, very closely with the county council on how to form this organization to best benefit the community overall. The advice was there is a statute for local arts agencies, and we have formed, or the Cultural Council here was formed under the, the idea of that statute, but not the actual statute. So, we pulled from the statute a lot of the, they, they want you to have, I think, as eleven-member board. Well, we didn't want to go quite that high, I think. So, so, in the spirit of the statute, we formed the F C three, completely independent of the county government, but that T D C was going to guide them and help them along and seed them. Once that was formed, now the county has the opportunity to designate through resolution a local arts agency, which this county never had until that time. So, again, working with our legal department in the county, we drew up a resolution to name the F C three as the organization to be the local arts agency. Why do you want a local arts agency in your community? Because it opens you up to funding that otherwise is not available to your community. So, we have already applied for the, the Department of Cultural, D C A, it's a D C A grant through the state, and we're, I don't know what the award is, and of course, we have to wait for the budget to be complete to see if we get it, but that may be our first state grant that we're going to get, which means we're bringing those dollars back into our community that otherwise wouldn't have existed. And they don't happen often, but I know during COVID, there was money available as well through, for cultural organizations, but county didn't get any because we didn't have a local arts agency at that time. So, the local arts agency really does have a lot of weight, being recognized by our county has a lot of weight. We get the money from the state of the arts license plates from the state. So, that money comes, previously, the Flagler Auditorium was managing those funds that were coming in, but they were not the local arts agency, so they have since turned those funds over to the Flagler County Cultural Council.
What, ma'am, what's your primary funding source?
A primary funding source?
For the F C three. What's the, where does most of the money come from?
Well, the Tourism Office right now has a line item budget where they help with a lot of the operational expenses, and then there's membership fees and fundraising.
How much is that operating budget from the, the T D C?
Forty thousand dollars a year.
Forty thousand dollars a year.
Then the T D C also paid for them once they were incorporated. T D C also funded the strategic plan process for them.
Yeah, I think, I think there needs to be some tier of separation between the T D C and the F C three. There's gotta be something that's.
What about the, it's two turtles.
The Turtle Trail? So, that was originated by Nancy Crouch with the Palm Coast Arts Foundation. And of course, Palm Coast Arts Foundation unfortunately had to close their doors during COVID, and they chose to gift that trail to F C three. So, Nancy continues to manage the Turtle Trail.
There is some income from that.
Under F C three. I'm sorry?
Isn't there some income from that?
Yes, yes, that's part of the fundraising. That's part of fundraising.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were you done, Councilwoman Miller? I'm sorry.
No, I was just trying to get some background on. It sounds like to me that they exist as an organization, but primarily there was a need for kind of a pass-through or an organization that was tagged as the county cultural organization or agency, arts agency, so that the county could be eligible for funds as a pass-through through this organization. So, that, that kind of helps explain some of the background to me a little bit. In terms of everything that we've discussed, I agree that, you know, this is not the outcome that I think anybody wanted in terms of the relationship and things like that, funding of the Palm Coast Historical Society through grants. So, I would agree that we do need to look at the process and try to figure out a way that, you know, everybody believes to be equitable, you know, for all the different organizations. I guess that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Marcus, these are all batched in one. We just have one, one vote, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion. Anything else in the dais? Ms. Cook called a vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
No.
The motion passes four to one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item K, consent. Anyone have any, any issues with the consent agenda? Do we need to do these individually, Marcus?
No, there's consent agenda, sir.
That's my thought.
The motion, there's no discussion.
Mr. Mayor, move approval on the consent agenda.
We got a motion to approve. Got a second? Discussion? Any discussion? You got anything, Vice Mayor? Come on, man.
Not for the consent, no.
Okay, all right. Opened up. Open up public comment?
Yes, sir.
One last public comment. Well, we got another one coming too, but Ms. Denise, you don't have anything on this. You're the Lone Ranger right now, girl.
Now you got to say it. You got to finish it.
Bring it back to the, bring it back to the dais. Do we need to call a vote or just say all in favor? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. One last final public comment section on the agenda. Ms. Denise has nothing. Staff has anything? Peter, you got anything? All right, we'll bring it back in public comment. Discussion, city matter, uh, city council matter not only matters not on the agenda. Anyone have anything? Are we, are we on time? Is this good, fair?
We're doing pretty good. We had a lot today. I'll let Councilwoman Miller.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple things. First, I do want to thank staff for all the work on the impact fees. We had three impact fee studies. We had a lot of back and forth. I want to thank our consultants as well. And also council, a lot of work was put into these. And I know we've got one more read for transportation, but just want to thank staff and council for everything that's gone into this because it's been a lot. It's been a heavy lift and I really appreciate everybody's work, so thank you. There were comments brought up on the ITT lots. I just want our residents to know, I'm going to look into that as far as the transportation impact fee and the impact of the ITT lots. So I just don't want people to think we're just leaving that hanging out there. I am going to look at that over the next two weeks.
Just what, the potential lessened impact from existing infrastructure there?
No, well, I guess the, the influx of dollars that should probably be, or maybe be considered by adding the two thousand dollars in because we went from.
Oh, the additional funding and what are we going to do with that?
I don't know, but I just, I don't want it to not be considered or discussed at least because we may have legal challenges.
Yeah, and for the record, I didn't respond to that, but roughly fourteen million dollars, right? If we have about seven thousand ITT lots and then an additional two thousand.
We sold all of them, yes.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so I.
Total for build-out.
Yeah, so during the meeting, I had asked staff for numbers on, on average, what we issue as far as COs on ITT lots, it's around a thousand. So, yeah, so you're looking, you know, around two million, I would say, a year.
Five years.
Yeah, so for what that's worth. I would like to ask for consensus from council. The, I met with the YMCA, a couple of board members from the YMCA yesterday and I know we had discussed possible operation of the free disamble pool by the YMCA during the construction. I would like to at least see a proposal from them, what that would look like, what the programming would look like. I, I want to make sure that we're not taking away any services from the residents. I have been told that programming would actually increase, which is a good thing, and that the cost to the city could actually decrease. But I think that we need to probably have that come before council and maybe even workshop it because there are potential other consequences of going that route versus keeping it in-house. And I think that that's probably, that probably warrants a robust discussion. So I would like consensus from council to give direction to staff to ask the why for a proposal.
Sure, I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah, no problem here. The, the one thing that I would add is I think some of us had an understanding of what that looked like. Right? And then they've gone back and reassessed from a financial perspective whether or not that's feasible for them. I think we all need to lay that flat and make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Do we have the USTA scheduled, City Manager?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
You did receive it, but we do not have it on your agenda yet.
I was just going to say those are two very similar situations, so I don't know if it makes sense to kind of hear them at the same time.
Yeah, maybe. Do we have a timeline on that, by the way?
No, it was part of the grant agreement that they did this assessment and they present it to you and then it's up to city council on next steps.
Okay.
So we, but we haven't gotten the, they're, they're going to do an actual presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last thing, I just, we received a letter. It was actually sent to all of us, a letter complimenting staff. And I, I would like to just read one portion of it because I think it's, it's a pretty cool letter. So it's addressed to the city manager, but it says, "On behalf of the United States Croquet, Croquet Association, I would like to express our deepest gratitude for the professionalism members of our organization recently, members of our organization recently experienced during our tournament held at Indian Trail Sports Complex on May 28 through June 1st." It talks about how the tournament travels all around the country and that they did come to our city for a tournament and they experienced extremely friendly, helpful and available staff. It says, "The team made it such a flawless event and the players want to return next year," which is fantastic because this is the type of thing that we need in our community, particularly as we're looking to expand sports tourism. It says, "If there was some type of commendation we could offer the following staff, it would be most deserving. At the very least, we would appreciate if this letter was added to their personnel files." And it specifically highlights James, James Hurst, Joseph Higgs, Joe Culver, Foster Karasia, Dan Whitling and Jared Branham. So thank you to the wonderful staff that did that for us and, and for this organization. I know Joe Higgs, like that guy works his butt off, so special thanks. I get compliments from him or for him all the time. Definitely, I think a guy should wear a cape at times. So just thank you to staff for making sure that that tournament was well taken care of. And I also heard great things about the lacrosse tournament this past weekend as well. Always a huge event, something we definitely want to continue to come back to our community. And I just heard that it was amazing. So thank you to staff for that too.
It's about a million, one point eight in economic impact this weekend, a hundred and fifty lacrosse teams.
And, and to that point, you know, I traveled down Belt Air every day multiple times and, you know, there wasn't a huge impact on travel times or anything like that. So, you know, a huge event that contributes a lot without, you know, hurting our community in any way.
Anything else from the council? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Just to, to follow on on the vice mayor's comments reference, you know, the process that we've been going through on impact fees. I think it's worth noting, you know, all of us didn't get necessarily what we wanted from a project's perspective or, or the rate or percentage or whatever the case may be, but we came together as a team. We, we compromised. We came to, I think, a reasonable solution to move forward to support our, our current future requirements for our city and did it in a way that I think we can be proud of it. And so just want to, again, thank my teammates up here on the dais for, for making it a good, positive work and experience and, and finding a way to get to yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You got anything?
Yeah, I, I would just say yes on, on the impact fees and the process we've gone through. Very good. I am concerned about the ITT lots not being made of, that information not being made available to us earlier in the process. And it makes me wonder, I'm new here, I hope there's nothing else. And that has given me some concern about, about how much questioning there should be when, when we get some of these briefings. So that is, that is of a concern to me because we could have made a really bad decision not having that information.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to jump in on that one. I asked the same question. They, they were in the information that we were given.
Okay.
It's just, it wasn't highlighted as ITT lots. It said like vested, vested platted lots. Right, so we didn't, I didn't realize.
Yeah. That's the kind of thing we.
No, I, I got you.
Been made available. So I, I don't agree with trying to, we use a word around that.
No, no, I mean, I'm just saying that that information was on the screen. I didn't realize it was the ITT lots either, though.
Right.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else?
Nope.
City manager, anything on our hog situation?
The hog situation is.
Did you ever reach out, did you, did you reach out to Ms., Ms., Ms. Carter?
Chief Sherbridge did, yes, sir.
Okay, we getting anything?
He's handling, he's handling that issue unless you have another update, Jason?
Mayor, City Council, Jason DeLorenzo, Chief of Staff. I'm, I handled it, actually. The, on Thursday, Friday, we, when we learned about hogs being trapped in the area of the northwest side of the F-section, we sent animal control out. Actually, it was Thursday. It was Thursday night. We sent animal control out and to determine whose trap it was. While we were on site, the trapper arrived. We spoke to the trapper. They're licensed or certified, whatever their qualifications need to be. They took care of the hogs. They have a farm on the west side somewhere. And what the great part of this is, is that now we have a resource when we need assistance with trapping hogs. Apparently, the gentleman was very easy to work with and the residents in the area were very happy. And also, the, the trap was placed in the appropriate place because it, it's not allowed to be on the city property or right of way. It was on private property, which was the correct way to do it. So everything was in order and the hogs were safely removed.
So that was the pictures I, I was sent, somebody put out a trap. I'm, I'm referring to working with FWC to do more trapping because like I said, she said she could provide the cameras and the nets traps. Just needing to work through county because county is tracking the whereabouts of all the hogs.
I believe Chief Sherbridge did speak with her.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with chief about that, but that's good. How many did they catch, Jason?
I believe five. I believe it's five.
Little piglets?
A couple of small ones, yeah.
Mama and a few piglets? Well, there's plenty. There's at least a half dozen, at least, no, probably eight, ten.
I saw more than that on the side of ninety-five backing up.
On the north end, right? Right from what Tans said.
And a number, large numbers off Culver over the last year and a half, like we've trapped four hundred.
I mean, when there's, when there's one, there's fifty.
Yeah, I mean, we use this thing, that's a pig bird. Maybe that's what you're talking about, the dead trap.
All I call it is bacon, bacon and pork chops to me. City attorney, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
City manager?
Yes, as part of your agenda packet is the reporting of emergency and sole source purchases. Any questions on those items?
I saw a credit.
I'm sorry? Yes.
What is that about? I like when we get money back.
Yes, it was a PO adjustment for propane for the pool.
Anything else? You good, City Manager?
Uh, yes, so just wanted to get your consensus to work with Flagler County on next steps for the sports complex proposal. Want to engage the county administrator on what that partnership looks like what, what, as we start developing the sports complex out west. Just need your consensus, consensus and approval to do so.
Yeah, my support.
Thank you.
Yes, me too.
And just as a reminder, city facilities are closed on Thursday for the Juneteenth federal holiday. And that's, that's it, Mayor. Yes.
Okay, with that being said, can we get it?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.